Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's City Council Successor Agency, to the Redevelopment Agency meeting. First, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Manager, are there any changes to the order of tonight's agenda?
No changes from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
I guess because we did not have a closed session, there is no report from a closed session, correct?
There's no report at this time, but there is a closed session later on in the meeting, just for the public's information.
All right, thank you. Council Communications and Announcements, let's start with Mr. Gocott.
I don't have anything.
All right. Mr. Olbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually have four brief announcements. I'll start off with the one most germane to our immediate activities. Cameron and I participated in a two-plus-two meeting with representatives from the school district and from Board of Trustees and from their staff and our staff. We discussed a number of things, probably the most relevant, I think, is, as you may recall, the council had asked us to see if the district was willing to take a broader look at the issue of crossing guards and also their relationship to the funding of healthy cities, and we did agree to do that at a future meeting. The other items that I wanted to share, one was a breaking news story that I just shared with Chief Rothaus that I saw this afternoon from the Wall Street Journal. It turns out that they broke a story that the Department of Justice has had a secret national automated license plate reader database system in place for some number of years. I don't have an awful lot of detail about it because I didn't have access to their website. Initially, apparently it grew out of Border Patrol stuff, but it's apparently expanded quite a bit beyond that. I mention that just because, you know, we recently had our own decision in that regard, and I think that may very well change the tone of the debate a little bit. Also, on the issue of automated license plate readers, one of our commissioners, I believe on the Parks and Rec Commission, the chair of it, Shelly, is it Shelly?
Sherry.
Sherry, Sherry, Sherry Schelfer, sorry, had communicated with us some issues that she had seen about automated license plate readers, one of which I passed on to staff because I thought it was kind of interesting, and I don't recall it being in the staff report we looked at, and that is that apparently some organizations are actually making public records requests for the raw data. And in some cases in California, they actually are gaining access to the raw data because it's not, obviously by definition, typically the result or involved in an active law enforcement investigation. So, a question about whether that's an issue for us to be concerned about is something I left to staff to research and get back to us on. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention that we've all read about the sad occurrence of what happened down at Disneyland not too long ago with the measles outbreak, which is rapidly turning into one of the worst measles outbreak in the United States in recent years. And I just want to pass along that the articles I've read have said that even in San Carlos, there's about 8% of the current incoming kindergarten class that does not have vaccinations for measles, mumps, and rubella, MMR. That's a pretty serious issue, and I want to bring it to the public's attention because it's one of those things that, as the Disneyland experience shows, when you're not vaccinated, you not only are putting yourself at risk, but you're putting a lot of other people in the community at risk, too. So hopefully by highlighting that, that's something that we can make some progress on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mark. Bob?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing tonight.
All right, thank you. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things to report on. As Mark said, I attended the two-plus-two committee meeting with the school district week before last. I also attended a meeting at the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce on an exciting event that we're planning for August, which is now called "The Taste of Good Living," and it's an event designed to showcase the restaurant industry in San Carlos, and the plan is to close the first two blocks of Laurel Street, to build a long communal table with a central outdoor kitchen, and to sell tickets to the public for a night of dining outside on the street. The date has been chosen as Sunday, August 30th. We had a good meeting with a lot of participation from restaurants such as Town, Cuisinette, Pia Cherry, Positano, Sneakers, and many others, so more to come on that. I also attended a CCAG Subcommittee Meeting on Airport Land Use Planning, where we took up the San Carlos housing element. San Carlos housing element was found to be conditionally consistent with the San Carlos land use plan for the airport. The reason it was conditionally consistent is there are some parts of the hills that are higher than the FAA, essentially the flight plans for some aircraft operating out of San Carlos, and because of that, the FAA requires some homeowners who live in a particular part of the hills to file with the FAA if they make major changes to their homes. So we had a good discussion about that. I also attended, with the mayor, the Lions Club Annual Crab Feed, which was, we had a great time. It was packed, it was a great charitable event. My son Ellis, who is 18 months, had his first Dungeness crab, and he loved it, so that was, that was great. And then lastly, I'd like to say that, as many people know, this is the 16th Annual Week of the Family in San Carlos. The Week of the Family is a week-long series of events organized originally by Council, former Councilmember Don Eaton and other folks. There's a great list of events happening all around town, things like scavenger hunts and bocce ball tournaments and all sorts of different family activities. There's a website, sancarlosweekofthefamily.org, for anyone who's interested in checking it out, and we, you know, encourage you to take a look and come up with some great things to do with your family this week, and that's all I got.
All right. And Matt, I think you had something you wanted to add?
Just a question, because Mr. Olbert said quite a few things about license plate readers. That is going to be coming back to us in about six months or so? Just for review?
I believe it is, yeah, that's what we agreed on.
Okay. Save my comments till then, thank you.
All right, thank you. And I, the only thing I had to report on was that I attended the Lions Club Crab Feed with Cameron, so he pretty much took care of that. Okay, any comments by staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of brief comments. I'd like to let the community know that we're in the process of starting the scientific survey to look at, into the possibility of putting together a bond measure for sometime later this year or in the future. So that'll be taking place shortly, so if you live in town, you've got a chance of being selected by the survey firm to participate, and I would hope that everybody who is selected can participate. Along the same line, currently, we still have the opportunity for the public to participate and share their thoughts on all the various topics related to a possible bond measure for infrastructure improvements or park and land acquisition through our Shape San Carlos website at shapeshancarlos.org. That's going to be going on through this week until Friday, so folks still have a few days to go online and share their thoughts with their city leaders.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Any other comments from staff? All right, and I was just reminded that we interviewed for the final one of two open positions of the Traffic and Circulation Commission tonight, and we did make a selection. We have chosen Rita Fusaro to serve on the Traffic Commission. All right. Now, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Do you want to announce the other one that we made, because we didn't have a meeting afterwards?
Oh, that's right, we also chose Tom Walker. Right, so congratulations to both Tom and to Rita, we look forward to your service. All right, moving on to public comment. Persons wishing to address the council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If there are more than five individuals wishing to speak on a particular issue, the mayor will draw five-speaker cards from those submitted to speak during this time. The balance of the public comment speakers will be called upon at the end of the council meeting. If you're speaking on an item that is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the City Council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. The City Council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or to have the matter placed on a future City Council agenda for more comprehensive action or a report and formal public discussion and input at that time. I'm looking here to see if we have anybody who wants to speak on public comment, and I think we do. Rita, did you want to, this is general public comment? All right. Just want to advise you that the timer is, well, I don't want to say rigged, but it is rigged, I rigged it, so you've got two minutes.
I don't care.
At a minute and 30 seconds, you will see that little yellow light come on, and that just means you have 30 seconds to wrap up.
That's completely fine. So, I have sent several emails to several of you, so I am not sure if those emails are read or if those, you know, every time I speak here, I do not know if the comments make into the minutes, so I was going to give these to each one of you, and I hope this goes in the record, you know, as it is in this council meeting. So basically, I want to point out that we had the first accident on Holly Street on January 5th, and we still haven't seen any improvement in any remediation measures that we've spoken to several of you about. It's a shame that the city thinks it's okay to hide behind one lawsuit and reduce the quality of life of every other person that lives on the street. I wanted to also point out, the peak community survey that you're running as part of the Shape San Carlos is unscientific. You're providing asymmetric information, you're not telling clearly to the public what the Holly Street corridor improvements are about, and you're asking people to vote on that. So, do go through, we ran a couple of petitions, online petitions, that several people signed and several people actually had good comments on, so I've extracted some of the comments and put them here. I hope you will actually read them, they are really educational, so, thank you.
Thank you, Rita. All right, Priya, sorry, sorry, Priya. And for the record, I did get your emails and I did read them. All right. Anyone else was to speak on items not on tonight's agenda? Dimitri?
Hi, I have some handouts as well. Exciting times. Couple of really quick things here. I just got an email from Mr. Johnson about the meeting regarding the shuttles, and sent him an email, and this is what I'm distributing to the council. There are a couple of issues with the shuttles moving back that I want to bring up and put on public record. East San Carlos Avenue was significantly narrowed by the city, and there's only room for one lane of traffic at two choke points, and I see that is going to be a problem for shuttles. Also, East San Carlos is supposed to be a bike boulevard, so I think that's a pretty big issue to have bikes in shuttles. And there's no traffic signal on East San Carlos Avenue for the shuttles to hit a left turn onto Industrial, so I see that as a big, another big issue with the plan. Additionally, the South Carlos, the shuttles, if they use East San Carlos, that really is adjacent to the residential neighborhood because the backyards of Homes and McHugh are directly adjacent to the street. So those are some issues that are found. Also, one big thing that's in the email is the city removed the stop sign at East San Carlos and Bayport that allows for safe access to the park, and also, I didn't put it in this email, but there is a preschool there. So we have families with little kids walking across the street trying to cross East San Carlos on Bayport, and we fought for years to get a stop sign, and it was removed with no notice and no public input. So I assume this is done to assuage Samtrans, but I have, you know, no evidence to back that. So this is, you know, a significant negative to the community. So you guys have the email, you can read through it. I have my recommendations about what ought to be done. I also want to point out, I've only started to do, look through the documents that we received from a public records request, and Caltrain shuttles have actually had an increase of passengers when they went to El Camino, an increase. They sent a report to you guys about what all the issues were, but actually, when they moved the shuttles to El Camino, there was an increase in ridership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dimitri. Jeff, we could have somebody maybe look at that, we could get a report on this whole stop sign issue?
Sure, we'll follow up. I got an email about this earlier today, so I've already posed the question to staff.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this, at this time? All right. Let's see, we are now at approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. So I think we probably need a motion on these.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar. Second?
All right. Motion and a second?
I would, sorry, I turned on my light, I guess, I wanted to remove one of the items.
All right.
Yeah, so let me put it this way, I wanted to remove item C, which is approve updates to the strategic plan, but I don't necessarily want to go over it tonight because I don't want to go really late, and so if we could, and the reason, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking that is because our consultant has asked us whenever we touch on the strategic plan that we do it publicly and openly and so forth, and putting it on the consent calendar, I don't see as being in the spirit of what our consultant says we should be doing with it. So, it'd be nice to have a little presentation, even if there's minor changes, but not necessarily tonight. So if there's no harm to postpone it, then maybe we could do that.
Through the chair, you know, does my colleague want to do this every month or every meeting? Because every meeting it comes up.
No, I don't believe it does.
Doesn't it come at least?
The strategic plan comes back every month.
Every month?
And we were doing a presentation to the council every time it came back, and the council asked us to put it on the consent calendar.
Maybe they don't want to see it, then.
No, I just bring that up because I just didn't know what, that's, I thought we had, and then we moved, made it a consent item, so, but whatever. It's, you want to remove it, so that's fine, we removed it.
All right, at that point, then we're going to just re-agendize it?
It's up to you. Well, it's up to the council. One council member has removed an item from the consent calendar, but if I understood you correctly, Matt, you don't have any comments or anything on it, you just?
I want the report. I just want it to be public.
Right, so what I could say is if the council wants, next month, we can give a report, or we could simply not take action on the item tonight, and we can put it on the next agenda with a report, but in the past, the council's asked us to put it on the consent calendar.
So at this point, do we need a second to remove it?
No, I think, any council member can remove an item.
All right, okay.
Deal with it as you wish, Mr. Mayor.
A motion needed to continue it to another meeting.
Right, or a motion to approve the strategic plan.
I think, Mark, you made the motion?
I will amend my motion to approve the consent calendar for items 7A, B, D, and E.
Second?
All right. Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins? Yes. All right, moving along, we are at a public hearing. This is a consideration of introducing ordinances adopting amendments to the San Carlos Municipal Code Title 18, zoning for corrections and improvements to land use and development standards, and Title III, revenues and finance to address updates to the parking fund and consistency with Title 18. Mr. Savay?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. In 2011, our zoning ordinance went through its first comprehensive rewrite in many, many years, and it went from a very traditional document with long paragraphs, with numbers, and lots of words, to a code with more graphics and illustrations, which is much easier to understand. In practice, at the zoning counter, we use the code every single day, and so do our customers, and even though our code is nearly new, it's time for a tune-up, just like a new car, you need to change the oil, sometimes you need to get a tune-up. The update of the zoning code is a City Council strategic plan objective and is mainly intended to clean up problems that have been identified over the last few years in everyday usage, and to clarify it and make it more clear and internally consistent. The Planning Commission is the primary reviewing, recommending body on the zoning ordinance to the City Council, and there's a total of 56 changes here this evening that are put forth by the Planning Commission. The Commission had a number of meetings to go through this, and there are a couple of changes that will be coming back to you. One is the issue of, or the idea of a conditional use permit for hotels south of Holly Street on Industrial, and the other is about front yard setbacks in the mixed-use downtown district or downtown zone that the City Council directed us to bring back at your last meeting. So we'll be taking those things back through, we're going to the greater East San Carlos neighborhood tomorrow night to talk about the hotel use, and then we're going to go back to the Planning Commission in the near future about the other issue, bring it back to you. I'm going to be handing off the presentation in a moment to Principal Planner Lisa Porres, and again, the most, most of the changes that you see before you this evening are minor in nature, but some are more significant, and Lisa is going to focus on the top six or maybe the more significant changes that are up for your review, and then will be available to answer any questions. And with that, I'm going to bring up Lisa Porres.
Thank you, Al. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. The six items that I will be presenting on tonight, the first one includes lot coverage, shouldn't have touched this, that's better, is lot coverage. Lot coverage obviously refers to the ratio of the total footprint of all structures on the lot relative to the net lot area, and it's typically expressed as a percentage. During the course of reviewing amendments to the zoning ordinance, we began to get a better sense of what was allowed and what happened during the 2011 update with respect to lot coverage in the RS3 zoning district. In 2011, the lot coverage was increased by 10% for the RS6 zoning district, but for the RS3 district, it remained the same at 25%. The recommendation before the council is to increase the lot coverage in RS3 from 25 to 35%, commensurate with what was done in 2011 to the RS6 zoning district. And basically, what this does is it would allow homeowners to do small additions on their properties, where currently they're right up against the 25% lot coverage, so giving them an additional 10% would allow them some flexibility to carry out some of the additions that they envisioned for their properties. For parcels that are subject to the hillside overlay district, they would not be included with this additional 10%, they would remain at 25%. And just to kind of give you a little bit of a better sense geographically, the RS3 zoning districts typically occur at the western edge of our city. There are some islands, though, however, within, surrounded by RS6, but generally, they're found in the western edge and even sometimes located up against some of the unincorporated areas. As you can see on this map here, most of our single-family zoning district is made up of RS6, and there are small areas of RS3 throughout. The next amendment that I wanted to cover that's a little bit more substantive has to do with land use regulations. Amendments to uses in the mixed-use commercial and industrial zoning districts are being recommended to better regulate the interface between non-residential uses and residential uses, primarily single-family, where perhaps, single-family district might be located next to a mixed-use district, where maybe a full-service restaurant or a bar might otherwise be permitted. So we took a close look at where those interfaces existed and have come up with the following recommendations. There are several slides on these, but I thought it was important to touch upon these, so I won't try to be overly verbose, but there they are on the screen. For cinemas and theaters, we want to increase the level of review from minor use permit to a conditional use permit, but then not allow these uses when the shopfront faces onto a residential zoning district. For small-scale commercial entertainment uses, again, similar, increase minor use permit to conditional use permit, but then do not allow them when they're fronting onto our districts. With large-scale commercial entertainment and recreation, currently, they're not permitted in the mixed-use northbound and southbound areas, and what we are proposing, as outlined in Attachment 8, we are proposing to allow them with a conditional use permit, but only on the east side of El Camino Real, where you see some of those narrow vacant strips along El Camino Real that could be utilized, for example, for a small putting green, and provide opportunities for the community to recreate. With respect to certain uses not being allowed or require a minor use permit, I'm going to go into what those are. There are certain uses in the mixed-use districts, such as bars and nightclubs, restaurants, convenience food, these would be like carryout sandwich type of restaurant operators, hotels and motels, convenient markets and food and beverage sales, places such as Circle K or 7-Eleven, and what we're proposing is to increase the level of review or either not allow them when they're fronting onto residential zoning districts. For the commercial district, the only modification that we're making is there is a small area zoning district in the city, it's only really within one area along Holly and Industrial. Neighborhood retail, currently, full-service restaurants would be permitted by right, and what we're doing is increasing the level of review to do a minor use permit, so at least there's an opportunity for people, if that use was ever to be proposed, that there would be an opportunity for people to come to a public hearing. The NR is right next to residential zoning districts, so we thought this was prudent to do. With respect to industrial districts, several of the uses listed here, recycling collection facilities, recycling processing facilities, as well as freight and truck terminals, we are recommending that some of these uses either not be permitted in certain districts, such as recycling collection facility, we're recommending that this change be made from permitted to not permitted in the industrial arts district, because the purpose of the arts districts is really not for such use, like recycling collection facilities. Same for processing facilities, and then freight and truck terminals, we're recommending that those go from permitted to conditional use permits in the IL zoning district, and then when they're adjacent to residential zoning district, that they go to a conditional use permit, and this is primarily found in the IH zoning district. Number three out of six has to do with minimum lot size. As we started to look at the regulations found within our zoning ordinance, particularly as they relate to economic development objectives, and especially as it relates to the general plan policy, which is provided up here on the screen, which is to strongly discourage subdividing land of large existing parcels in the east side area, and that's Policy LU6.8 in our general plan. The existing minimum lot sizes in some of these districts are rather small, and you might see on the screen here that GCI, you can have a lot size as small as 5,000 square feet, same for the light industrial zoning district, and just for comparison purposes, the minimum lot size for a residential zoning district is 5,000 square feet. So because of the fact that we strongly discourage these in the general plan, and because they don't relate or tie directly or give any, lend themselves well to economic development objectives for preserving large parcels for commercial and industrial type uses, staff is, and the Planning Commission is recommending these modifications. Staff actually did some research from nearby jurisdictions. Staff actually did some research from nearby jurisdictions, looking at similar zoning districts, and came up with a proposal to increase the minimum lot sizes accordingly, as shown on this slide. The fourth item that came up and quite a bit of had quite a bit of discussion on had to do with outdoor dining primarily along Laurel Street. And the concern that was brought up by the planning commission was assuring that there were sufficient sidewalk clearances for pedestrians, for mothers pushing, you know, strollers, for people walking their dogs, for those who might be in wheelchairs to be able to pass through as they move along Laurel Street. Staff noted that in the zoning ordinance, there's a minimum sidewalk clearance of six feet that's required to be maintained. So anybody approaching the city for an outdoor dining permit or a permit to display their retail wares would need to have a minimum six-foot clearance. Based upon the width of the sidewalk, this would make many of these outdoor areas infeasible. So staff consulted with our Public Works Engineering staff and other key staff in the city, and we felt that a four-foot, a minimum of four-foot sidewalk clearance would be sufficient and would allow the city to accomplish having an outdoor dining presence along Laurel Street. When this matter came up before the planning commission, they asked staff to further investigate the purpose of the brick demarcation line that's found along Laurel Street. And upon consultation with a former Public Works Director, staff learned that the brick demarcation line was really there to serve as a visual aid for where outdoor dining could be placed. So the recommendation before the council this evening is to require the outdoor dining area be limited from the property line to the outermost edge of that first brick demarcation line, which is shown here on the screen, pretty much down to the first set of the red dashed line, but that at all times, a minimum of four feet be maintained. And that comes into play especially when there's street trees or other types of features in the public right of way along the sidewalk. The next item has to do with four stories along Laurel Street. Currently, four stories are permitted by right in the mixed-use downtown core zoning district in the city, provided that they are set back. As this diagram here on this slide shows, the four-story needs to be set back or aligned with the story below. The third story is required to be set back 10 feet, and so therefore, the four-story is required to be set back 10 feet. Staff became aware of, or at least was asked to look into, the possibility of eliminating the four-story based upon some feedback received from the city council Economic Development Subcommittee following a review of a conceptual plan for new development along Laurel. When this was presented to the planning commission, the planning commission recommended to not entirely eliminate the four-story, but instead make it be subject to a conditional use permit. So the recommendation before the council is to maintain the four-story, but have it be subject to a conditional use permit where there's a higher level of city discretion over whether or not that four-story is permitted within a project. The next item that staff would like to discuss is actually one that we're not recommending. And this is a recommendation that came out of the planning commission as they reviewed the assortment of modifications that you are also reviewing here tonight. And the concern was that outdoor dining areas are not required to provide parking. The parking requirement for the mixed-use districts along Laurel in and around the downtown requires that restaurants provide one space for every 250 square feet. The planning commission asked staff to bring back some language that would require the same, but for outdoor dining areas. So typically, when we come up with a parking calculation, it's just for the square footage that's within the restaurant space, the interior restaurant space. And what the planning commission asked staff to do is also apply it to the exterior outdoor dining area. So staff is not recommending adding this provision into the zoning ordinance at this time. Number one, one of the things we know is that a lot of the outdoor dining sites or the restaurant sites are already in a position where if they were to have to provide parking for outdoor dining, there's no physical space for it. The only avenue would be for them to apply for a parking in-lu fee and pay that fee to get their parking requirement met if this provision was to be in place. The other reason that we're, staff is not recommending it is because we're currently doing a comprehensive study or investigation of downtown parking management strategies. And we feel that that's something that should come forward, that we can take a look at comprehensively before we institute any additional parking requirement in the downtown. The next item that I wanted to mention, in case anyone might have seen it or for the benefit of the public at home, there is a typo in one of the red line strikeout areas which indicates that outdoor storage would not be permitted by right in the heavy industrial zoning district. That is incorrect, and we just want to clarify that no change is proposed for that. The outdoor storage will remain to be permitted by right in the heavy industrial zoning district. To conclude, as Al mentioned at the outset of this presentation, staff is, the item before you is to consider introducing two ordinance. The first are all the modifications to Title 18 of the city zoning ordinance, and the other has to do with Title III, which concerns revenue and finance within this section, Chapter 3.36, which deals with the Parking Exception Fund. Staff is recommending that this be modified to be consistent with Municipal Code Section 1820-060, Parking in Lufy, which is actually in the zoning ordinance by reference of Title 18. And the reason for this is Chapter 3.36 refers to the West Side specific plan area, which has been superseded by the general plan. It talks about an inconsistent approval process than is otherwise outlined in the Parking Lufy section of Title 18. And Chapter 3.36 only talks about the funds being used to acquire and improve existing public parking, whereas in the in-lufy section of the zoning ordinance, funds can be used for a much broader or wider range of transit needs. So that is the reason why we are bringing that one forward as well. So this concludes my portion of the presentation, and both Al and I are available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Questions of staff? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Al. Thank you, Lisa. Some questions here. Can you refresh my memory about what is the rationale or the logic behind why the lot coverage ratio is lower on an RS3 area than an RS6?
The reason why it's lower for RS3 than RS6, these areas are typically areas that are on the outer edges of the city. Traditionally, they have been. And as an example, whenever land is annexed into the city, it's required to come in at the lower density. So there's basically two different density levels for residential zoning districts within the city. One allows six units to the acre, RS6, and the other allows three units to the acre. And these areas are separated based upon their geographical, the reason why they have two different zoning districts is based upon their geography and the physical conditions in and around those areas. However, there are some RS3 areas that are surrounded by RS6, so they might be a remaining, you know, pocket of RS3 that never got switched over or changed over for whatever reason. I do know that when you first are annexed into the city, you're required to be RS3, and then over a certain amount of time, you can apply to be rezoned to RS6. But that has to be on the property owner's initiative.
Just to confirm something, I think I heard Al say, staff is bringing back the discussion item about the 50% lot coverage ratio on the RS6. Is that correct? At some point in the future?
No, I don't believe so. I think there were, there were two items you mentioned, the hotels and then the setbacks for new development in some of the mixed-use zoning districts.
Jeff, do we have that on a slotted for a future agenda discussion? As I remember, Matt and I had asked that that be discussed.
That's correct. You did, and we'll be slotting that in tomorrow.
And that does not, we can deal with that separately from the rest of these. We don't need to somehow shoehorn that into this.
Into this process?
Yes.
That's correct. In fact, anything new that comes up tonight, you wouldn't shoehorn into this process. You would simply, I think, as a council, direct staff to add them to the two that we've already got and send them back through the planning commission process to be vetted before they arrive back at you.
Okay. Next question, Lisa. The change, if I understood, of the proposed change for recreation east of El Camino Real, recreational use east of El Camino Real, so that's on the strip of land that is between El Camino and the berm?
That's correct. Just for areas on the east side of El Camino.
If somebody were to develop that, how would that, how would we provide parking for that? Or is that a separate consideration, merely the fact that we allow the use, it still has to meet some parking requirement? So that may be--
That is correct. Even though we allow a use, it still has to meet all the standards that are otherwise imposed for that particular zoning district.
It's a, it's a nice idea. I just have to admit, I find it problematic to think about how you'd get parking in there for, for some of the ideas that I've heard. Last question, actually, pardon me, second to last question. I noticed that in the industrial area in particular, there's a number of changes that are being made to take uses that were permitted and making them not permitted under the proposal. In general, because there are some other areas where I've had discussions with Jeff and with others where I'd like to see some changes made to, to basically restrict certain allowed uses. Generally, the feedback I get is, oh, that runs a risk of us being sued, and so you really ought not to do that. I'm simplifying the discussions. Why is, why are these proposed changes not raising a comparable risk? You know, in other words, why is staff proposing basically reducing the allowed uses here?
We're not eliminating all uses. It's just one of the uses. And maybe it's a good question for Greg to weigh in on, and we're not taking away all possibilities for, for development.
That is the legal standard, but the issue I think Councilmember Olbert's raising is sort of a case-by-case issue. So we're comfortable with these changes, but yeah, that's always an issue we're concerned about.
Okay. So on a case-by-case basis, we may deem it as being an acceptable risk in one place and not in another.
Well, I, I'll just say that these are, these questions about downzoning or spotzoning are always a case-by-case basis. So I don't want to speculate tonight about individual potential cases, but you know, I've reviewed this with staff, and we, we think that these don't meet that standard. Lisa is generally stating the legal standard is, if you, if you take away all viable economic use of a property, that's one potential argument for a regulatory taking, if you will. There's other nuances to that where we talk about where you're denying property owners' rights that other property owners in the same general area are receiving. And I think because of the broad-based zoning here, that's why we're comfortable with, with these changes.
Okay. Thank you. Last question. The proposed change on the outdoor dining rule about the four-foot, four-foot outdoor dining usage. When I first saw that, I was like, well, that's sort of our current practice on a number of places along Laurel Street. But then it occurred to me that, you know, to the extent we have more and more restaurants going in, and you end up getting restaurant after restaurant after restaurant after restaurant, narrowing the use of the sidewalk for extended lengths actually starts getting more and more problematic. In other words, it's, it's almost like if there was a way to do this, my interest in that particular change is a function of how heavily utilized it becomes. So my question is, is there a way that we can allow that not as a matter of right, but as a matter almost on an exception basis? So it's something that could, in some future event, if we deem that the public health and safety requires it, that we can say, no, we're going to restrict it now? In other words, not make it a matter of right?
They do have to come in and get a design review permit for outdoor dining. So there is a level of discretion for staff to take, and there are certain standards, whether you have, what type of outdoor furniture you have, you know, height of the umbrellas, how far things can extend out. And, and I suppose, you know, as, you know, just like we're doing today, if we need to modify those standards to create a more feasible situation. I think Al wants to jump in.
Yes, through the mayor. You can limit the types of uses and the number of them on a block. For instance, there are certain restrictions for distances between banks and nail salons in San Carlos. So you, you have the ability to say there's, you know, you can have one every 300 feet or every 500 feet or something like that.
Well, just to be clear, I want to make sure I understand. So effectively, that means that a couple of restaurants might be allowed to have outdoor dining, and then another one might open up, and we'd say, I'm sorry, because these other two already are here, and you're within that whatever range, if we establish a range. You can't do it even though they could.
That's correct. Yeah.
I wasn't aware we could do that. Okay. Thank you. That's, that's all, those are all my questions, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Matt?
See, the first question has to do with the clearance of the four feet that you mentioned. And I'm wondering if there's a, you had mentioned because of places we have trees, makes total sense, but I was wondering what the clearance is from. Is it the grate or is it the tree trunk?
It's from, you have to have complete clearance from the curb all the way out to your outdoor dining area. It needs to be four foot clear. So within that four feet, if you have a tree right there, you wouldn't be able to meet that four feet.
So you couldn't have any dining right there at all?
You'd have to undulate your, your outdoor dining area.
Okay. So, well, then follow me. If you undulate, can you, where would you measure from? From, you know, the edge of the table or something to what, the tree or, or you just don't even have any dining there?
I believe we have that measurement. I'll have to look that up, but there is, there are specifics for how you measure that area.
Okay. Yeah, because I would think there needs to be. The reason I'm asking the question is because as the trees grow, sometimes the grates, you know, they're in quarters. So there's a seam, and they, they can lift. And if you're in a wheelchair and the four feet's to the trunk, and you're expected to roll over that grate, you know, if it's anything more than a quarter inch, you could have a problem. That's why, you know, in architecture, thresholds can't be any more than a certain height so that wheelchairs can get over them adequately. Now, I think it looks like Al's going to address it.
So the, the way the code reads, it says that the outdoor dining area may be located no further than the extent of the brick demarcation line, okay? For all other areas at a minimum of four feet of unobstructed sidewalk must remain available for pedestrians. Here, here we go. For purposes of the minimum clear path, parking meters, traffic signs, trees, and all other obstacles shall constitute obstructions within the sidewalk area. But I guess maybe to get to your specific point, you know, where do you measure from? It's the edge of the tree trunk or the, or the bar of the, or the pole of the meter, whatever it is? It doesn't say, but it's more of a, you know, if you go out in the field, it's sort of a matter of practice, a matter of what makes sense. When, when a code enforcement officer is in the field, it would be what's practical and what's, what makes sense. So it's not written here, and that's the way we would apply it.
If we want to discuss it later, maybe we could have some discussion about tree grates and add that as--
Certainly.
--as an obstruction. Okay. Very good. All right. Leave that one open. The 10, the 10 feet on Laurel Street, the graphic you gave that shows the third, third and fourth stories would be back 10 feet? And so you're not making any recommendation on changing that setback, but you're just saying the fourth story would be subject to conditional use permit?
That's correct. All other standards would remain in place.
Okay. I'm, I'm a little curious how the 10 feet came to being, but it's not, it's not in red or anything like that here, so I'm not sure we should be talking about it. But I'm just a little curious how that, how the 10 feet was arrived at.
During the initial zoning code update, we had consultants, and we looked at different building types in our downtown-- building types in our downtown and other downtowns. And part of it is, you know, what you see if you're across the street, how much of the building you will, you will see, and how it feels as you walk down the street. So a lot of it is about the experience, the pedestrian experience in the street, and what the building looks and feels like. And 10 feet is a standard that is widely used in other towns. It seems like it, it works. So that's kind of how, it's a sort of, again, something that seems to work in the field.
Okay. I'm going to mention something about that, Mr. Mayor, during discussion. Not that it's, and then the last question I had is, I think the city attorney, or the city manager hit on this a little bit, but one of the things I don't see in here, when you're talking about changes to the commercial zone, I appreciate the sensitivity of the things you were saying, that, you know, if it's adjacent to residential, then it's prohibited. And one of the things we've had from one particular individual, but I think it probably would come from others if they cared to complain as much, is kennels on the east side that are adjacent to residential. And I don't see that being addressed here. So it sounds like that would have to be a separate item if we wanted to bring it in. So we can do that under discussion and come to a consensus if we want to look at that issue. Is that right? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Lisa, for the presentation. The way I look at these things is, you know, these are trade-offs between trying to preserve the community character and the, chart the long-term land use policy for the city in a way that we think, you know, residents want their city to, to look and feel. Against, you know, particularly when you look at restricting some of the commercial uses against the potential that could be created with commercial uses, which could be, you know, creating places that people want to frequent, you know, bringing goods and services and entertainment to the city, creating sales tax revenue, economic revenue for the city, all those things are positive. And so what's a little bit difficult for me to see, I can see one side of the leisure, which is, you know, building a movie theater that's facing onto a residential area. Yeah, from a common sense perspective, I can see, okay, that doesn't make sense. But I don't know what the other side is. And so I wanted to ask sort of a couple of questions on that theme. One is, have, has staff looked at what the economic impact is to some of the restrictions on commercial uses? I note in the staff report, it says there's no fiscal impact, but I, I find that hard to believe if we're restricting potential commercial uses, unless you're contending that none of these commercial uses would ever come to fore. How do you, how, how does one think about curtailing commercial uses and, and the impact to business activity in the city?
Through the mayor. We haven't done an economic impact analysis on particular uses and kind of the revenues in other ancillary activity they would bring to the downtown or, or general fund. So we, we really haven't done that. This is really more based on quality of life issues as opposed to economics.
And when you say, and the quality of life, is that, and sorry to be glib about that, is that just one man's opinion? Or is it based on, you know, persistent requests from residents? Is it based on surveys? What, how do we, how do we arrive at what's the right sort of quality of life determination?
I think based on experience. You know, as planning professionals, and having worked in other cities and had different experiences, and, and we process these use permits, we process applications. And so we're able to see what types of businesses create problems, what kind of problems they create over the long term, and what kind of complaints, and specifically what types of issues there are. You see noise, there's trash, there's traffic, parking issues in a neighborhood. So those are the kinds of balancing acts that you have. And so traditionally, what, what we've done is, you know, depending on what the, the type of use across the street, single family tends to be the most sensitive. And as you go up to multifamily, you get renters, people, there's different psychologies and sociologies depending on the densities that, that you live in. And so people tend to care more or less. So over the years, what we've done is we've had the use permit process as a way for the city to have some discretion and have an open discussion with the neighborhood and everybody around the table, and to be able to condition certain impacts that we know we've experienced when there is a problem and you don't have a use permit. So that's, it's, it really is based on a lot of experience over the years and, and practice. And you can always, always, it's a, it's a matter of continuous improvement.
Okay.
Yeah.
So can I ask just specifically on the, the parking? So the reason you're not recommending to go along with the planning commission's recommendation, is that from an economic development perspective, or you think it's infeasible for, or it would put too, place too much of a burden and would therefore reduce potential restaurant commercial activity? Is that, is that the idea?
I think it's both. Yeah. I thought, I think you, your, your questions outlined both of the issues perfectly.
Okay. So on that instance, you think the trade-off is, we should, you know, not put the additional new parking requirements because it may potentially hurt economic activity?
Yeah. I mean, it's in, and it, it curtails restaurant, the ability for the restaurant to have those extra spaces out there. I mean, that's good revenue to them, it's good revenue to the city. And also, it's a matter of vibrancy along our street. We've come to enjoy it as a community. And it's impossible for the restaurateurs to, to provide the parking spaces. They don't, they would have to dig out, you know, part of the building to put the spaces in. So really, it's a physical impossibility. The other thing to consider is, okay, well, we have this in-LuFey idea on the books, and we're going to be bringing forward to you and, and, and some other commissions, this idea of, well, if you can't provide the parking, you could pay for it. And typically, in LuFey's, I mean, the cost of, of creating a real parking space is very expensive, you know, $20,000, $30,000. Of course, you could, you could lower that cost for restaurateurs if you wanted to. So those are, those are some of the reasons that, that, I mean, they, they, we are also, I think the commission, what they were recognizing is that these are the highest parking demand uses, and they should pay their fair share, or do something for their fair share to provide. But right now, we don't think this is the best solution, and we think that there may be other and better solutions down the road.
Okay. So just a couple of quick questions then. I guess what troubles me a little bit is that, you know, we, we are kind of making a, the staff is kind of making a determination to some degree about that specific line item on an economic cost benefit analysis. But it's, there's not a lot of rigorous, like, analysis that's been done, sort of just kind of a general view. But then there's other uses, and I know, you know, there's members of the public here, and property owners downtown, who've kind of raised the same potential economic concerns about the restrictions on height, and there may be others about curtailing some of the commercial uses adjacent to residential areas. If we wanted to do kind of a more thorough, kind of, given that these land use policies can be far-reaching, that we don't touch them that often, that, you know, they, they drive economic investment decisions in our city, you know, what would it take to, to do kind of a, if we were to ask the question, what's the economic trade-off in making these land use decisions? Is that, can you talk a little bit about what it would take to provide that information?
Um, I think for, I mean, if you were thinking about, there, there's two separate issues here. There's the parking issue, and I, and you referred to, well, there's three. You referred also to the fourth story and maybe the use issue. You know, we could do some economic analysis on one or all of these. I think what you would find for, if you eliminated a fourth story, it would be extremely expensive for somebody. I mean, we have actually done some, some economic analysis on a, at a staff level recently, and it would be in the hundreds, let's say you had a 10,000 square foot building, it would be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars annually in loss.
No, I mean, I guess I'm not asking--
For--
--to do the analysis now. I'm just asking, like, if you guys were to prepare a report for us to say, this is the likely impact, either it's negligible, or we think it's this or that, what would that take? Is that something that's a--
We could do it, certainly. I mean, it would take some time. We would, you know, I guess we could come right back to the city council with that information. So yeah, I would, we certainly could do that, and it would just take time.
Is there any, is there any legal or other reason around the timing of passing these specific regulations right now? Is there anything driving a deadline? If we did this today versus a month from now versus six months now, would it have any material impact on the city?
I think in some cases, yes, it would. I think that what, if, what I would suggest is that if you have specific ones that you want economic analysis for, you table those and, and do the rest, something that, if you feel comfortable with the rest of it. Because there is a sense of urgency, I think. The marketplace is very, we're reacting, we're in a reactionary mode. Things are happening very quickly. I think we want to have our zoning ordinance up to date and, and right as soon as possible. So that's what I would suggest, is, is the ones that you would like to, to do some further analysis on, be specific about those.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sorry about that. One question. I think this is probably for Lisa because there was a letter written to you, and I realize it was almost a year ago, from the Samuels, Samuels and Landrow. And they had asked, I guess their property is in R3, they're up on Kent, which is up between Normandy and Coventry. And they were concerned that it had been, the lot coverage had been reduced of below 40%, I guess down to 25, and that they couldn't build. Do you know whether or not this, it sounds like this is, we're increasing it back to 35%? Does that affect them directly?
Yes, it would affect them directly. And they're actually one, I guess, the example of, of a family who's looking to do a small addition, but is bumping right up against the 25%. So by increasing it to 35%, they would be able to do the small addition that they've been hoping they could do. And they reached out to staff, and we informed them that we are looking at some amendments in the zoning ordinance, and they, they brought this issue up to us. And we felt that it seemed a reasonable request. We looked at it, and based upon our increase that we did to the other single-family zoning district in 2011, we found that this would seem fair and reasonable to kind of increase that somewhat so that folks could have a little bit more flexibility to do those additions.
So this, this works for them?
Correct.
Okay. And are they, are, are they in the hillside overlay district?
Uh, they are not. They are on a flat lot. So they would be allowed to have additional 10%.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Any other questions of staff? I don't see any lights on. All right. This is a public hearing. We do have some speaker cards. And again, the two-minute rule applies. The first speaker card I have is Charlene Landrow. Charlene, come on up. That's right. That's you.
So, good evening, councilmembers. Mr. Mayor, my name is Charlene Landrow. My husband and I have lived in the same home in San Carlos for over 34 years. And I came here tonight to voice his and my support for this recommendation on the RS3 to change it from 25% to 35%. We, just super briefly, my husband and I had a modest room addition planned for some time. And when the new ordinance came in in 2011, the 40% that we had had since 1998 was cut back to 25%. And that took us completely by surprise, and we could not go forward with our project. And so in speaking with the planning department at that time, the staff told us that they were planning to correct this along with other modifications that they needed to do for the ordinance. And so we have been waiting all of this time since 2012 for this process to complete. And so now here we are today. And the planning commission did review this and approve it. And we are very much in favor of it because it will allow us to go forward with this plan of ours, our little project that has been on hold for so very long. And the 25% is so restrictive. We have a 10,000-foot lot, and a 2,500 square foot home would be the maximum. And we want to go just a little bit beyond that. It also, it seems fair to us, because as you are certainly aware, with the new zoning ordinance, the RS6 was raised from 40% to 50%. And so it seems reasonable and fair that RS3 likewise be increased from the 25% to the 35%. And I just want to say that we are so happy that the planning department has made this recommendation, and want to ask the council to go ahead and approve it as recommended. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlene. All right. Our next speaker is Les Girdlestone.
You'll see it.
Ah, there we go. It's almost like congressional testimony. Thank you. I'm Les Girdlestone. My father is Howard Girdlestone, and I'm here on behalf of the Girdlestone Family Trust. My scope tonight is strictly with regards to the three blocks on Laurel Street. We have sent you a letter, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for acknowledging and receipt of the letter. What I'd like to address tonight, outside of that letter, is our perception of what appears to be almost a knee-jerk reaction to a hypothetical rendering of what a building could look like in downtown San Carlos. The individual who put it together, presented it, was, has no plans to build, and was presenting the city with information and forethought with regards to how cities are developing into the future. The younger generation wants to live close, or have their living quarters, their work, public transportation, all within a small confined area, if you will. So that's what was presented just as a thought. Now, with regards to Wheeler Plaza going in, Wheeler Plaza is essentially the backyard of the 600 block of Laurel Street. So when you're on Laurel Street, and you look west, you're going to see a five-story building going 50 feet high. But if you own on Laurel Street, you're receiving a bigger restriction. Now, the number one request we receive is, is there Class A office space available in the downtown core area? And the answer is essentially no. There's 50 buildings downtown in those three blocks, 10 buildings have some kind of second-floor space. That's it. And the whole time we've been here, no one has proposed building a space to go higher than two stories. That it's almost physically impossible, it's almost economically impossible to go higher than that. We can't provide the parking, we can't provide meeting other code requirements and so on like that. The only thing we're asking is that the city understand the economic impact of the decision to restrict it from 50 feet to 40 feet, both for the city and the landowners. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Les. All right. Would anyone else like to speak on this? All right. Seeing none. Need a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry. All right. There's been a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. All right. I believe we need a motion.
Could I ask a question?
Uh, yes.
By the way, I want to let this public know that the reason I didn't ask any questions is because I spent 40 minutes this afternoon with Mr. Seve and Ms. Porus. I had a number of questions. I had about 12 or 14 of them, but they were answered all in good order today. That's why I didn't answer, ask any this evening. But I am, I think I'm going to be against some of these, two or three of these items. So how do you propose that we do this?
Well, I guess that comes down to how you make your motion, or how a motion is made.
Okay. Fine. That's fine. I just don't want to vote against the entire motion. That's my point. Just in sort of like a, an item on the consent calendar, as we have done, we want to pull out a couple of these, you know, things, and then vote on them separately. But go ahead. I'll let someone make a motion.
Through the chair, just a, a quick question for Greg. Greg or Jeff, is it possible for us to address these one by one?
Sure. You can handle these however you'd like. You could make a motion to simply go with the staff recommendation, get a second, and then discuss your way to a amended motion, which sounds like is what would be happening. Or you can just skip the motion and talk about them individually.
All right. Matt, I apologize. Your light was on before we went to public comment, and it's still on. So I assumed that you had a, something you wanted to say?
During discussion, I, I had a question that came up again, and I can't remember what it was now, so.
All right. All right.
I'm, like Bob, I have a number of changes that I'd like to see making, and I'm not necessarily supportive of every single item that staff is recommending here. If procedurally, it works best by me making a motion to adopt staff's recommendations subject to amendment and discussion, I will make that motion.
And I'll second, precisely the same reasons.
Mr. Mayor, where do we, you know, I brought up a couple issues that, that I wanted to have some discussion on, but I'm not sure where to interject them, and the city manager said if we want to look at those, at least one of those issues, we'd have to come to a consensus to put it on a future agenda, like we've done with some of the other ones.
We've had a motion and a second. Is this not the opportunity to have a discussion?
This would, yeah, this would be the opportunity to go across the dais and talk about whatever, you know, whatever comments you have about the proposal that's in front of you, or whatever comments you might have about subsequent proposals that you'd like studied that aren't included in what's here tonight.
Okay. You want to continue? Sure. I'll take the easy one first. I do think the language about the clearance, I don't think that's something that should just be left to interpretation, which is how it would be done right now, I think. And there's, you know, there's enough, there's that one word or phrase that Mr. Seve shared with us that I think would allow staff to say a tree grate is an obstruction, but they wouldn't have to say that. And so that's, that's one thing I'd like added to the definitions or whatever portion of this it would fall under, because as I said, it doesn't take very long for the tree roots to start pushing up those grates, and if it's anything over half an inch, at least architecturally, when you look at the building code standards, I think it's, it used to be three-quarters of an inch, and they lowered that down on what you can have, at least on commercial buildings for a threshold, and they did that so that wheelchairs could get over. So you can imagine if you're going down the sidewalk and you run into a tree grate that has anything more than, you know, half-inch displacement vertically, could be a problem for somebody in a wheelchair. So that's why I'd like to see those tree grates be included in the definition of what an obstruction is.
Through the chair?
Yes. Can, can we ask Greg or Jeff to be keeping a list of these items as comments are made? Just because I think otherwise, I suspect we all have a number of them, and I think we're otherwise going to lose track of them.
So that's the only one that I had as an item where I'd like to see something changed in what's before us. But then, the, what's not in this list that she gave about changes, and if I'm understanding this correctly, in order for us to discuss it, we have to bring it back later, and that is kennels in the industrial area, the commercial area of San Carlos, which I guess is pretty much on the east side, but, and I suppose you could have something, you know, on Laurel Street that might be adjacent to residential, but some kind of language that would say, if you're going to put in a kennel, especially where animals are being kept overnight, that they not be adjacent to our residential zoning.
Greg, how does that work? Do we add it here, or do we, does it come back to us as a, because it's not in the zoning regulations now?
I think that is in the category of something that staff will probably need time to study the kennels item, but you do have some flexibility to make some minor changes to the zoning regulations. I just wanted to point that out, because procedurally where you are now is introducing an ordinance. So to the extent that there's some tweaks you want to make that might clarify what the staff's actually proposing, I think you could make those types of changes, but something new, like Councilmember Growcut's proposing, that category of item, or, and we need to, we're just trying to make sure that what is being, any changes that are being proposed that require, that are significant, that affect the requirements for a zoning district, come back to you with adequate study. So if there are things that you want to delete, or you want us to come back on those items, that's, I think, the opportunity to how to try to define the difference between the two. So we had a good example before you now, the definition of tree grate. I think that can be accommodated out of introduction of an ordinance, procedurally where we are now, and then the other is going to require more study.
All right. So the kennel thing comes back?
If the council wants it to come back, that's.
All right.
Understand, through the chair, if the kennel thing came back, there may be kennels already there, they're already grandfathered in, and they can't be taken out. So just to make sure everybody.
Yeah. No, I understand that.
All right. Anything else that you wanted to add?
Nope.
All right. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I.
Pardon, sorry to interrupt. Could I ask staff to put up Slide 3, which has the summary of, just for the purpose of discussion?
Not a problem. I had a number of things. First off, let's tackle probably one of the, one of the two biggest ones. I am personally concerned about Laurel Street being turned into kind of a canyon. I was on the Economic Development Subcommittee of the council when staff had presented this to us and the opportunity to us, and I have to admit, I was very surprised to even learn that, that the allowable zoning was as high as it was. That's for both aesthetic reasons, purely aesthetic reasons, and also for shadowing reasons, very practical shadowing reasons. So personally, I have no problem with, with adopting the staff proposal in here for the conditional use permit for the fourth floor, but I would really like to see the issue studied analytically from a point of view of shadowing and aesthetic impact and whatnot, because I'm just concerned that that may not go far enough. And I do think that, that we would drastically change the, the look and feel of the downtown by having, if we end up with a canyon kind of effect on Laurel Street. I recognize that, that Wheeler Plaza is itself a, a large project. I will simply say that I was not on the council when it was approved. So it's, you know, grandfathered in. The next item I had was, has to do with the commercial height and density, because the two are in my mind are related, in the area around the Holly Street, Old County Road intersection. And I'm specifically thinking of nearest the intersection. As you go further south in Old County, my concern drops off. That too is an area that's zoned for currently, I believe, up to a maximum height of 50 feet for, in the commercial areas. And that greatly concerns me. I'm specifically concerned about the traffic impact of that. And I know that there are parking requirements and whatnot, but there are ways of, of addressing the parking requirements that would still end up putting a lot more traffic in that area, and that's an area where I would like to see staff go back and study this in more detail, and perhaps bring forward, it's not in the, in the package tonight, but perhaps bring forward some kind of conditional use arrangement there as well, that basically looks to.
Can you repeat the area that you're speaking of in your latter, the comment you just made?
The, it's, it's the area, if you start at the intersection of Old County and Holly, so just east of the railroad tracks, there's a, there's a little bit of commercial space there, and there's, it sort of extends south as well. It's the area down the first couple of blocks, basically. I don't think north, it's just that one little strip mall area. I think after that, it turns back into residential stuff. And I'm just concerned about it being zoned for 50-feet height currently. That, that concerns me. And actually, I mentioned traffic, but in addition to traffic, I can only imagine that the residential property owners nearby would probably not like having 50-foot-tall buildings next to them, even with the setback requirements that we have. Those are kind of restrictions in my mind that I'd like to see added to our zoning codes. On the other hand, I know we, I've mentioned this before in a couple of earlier meetings, I'd actually like to also see staff come back with a proposal to increase the allowable heights in what I keep thinking of as the southeast portion of the city, which is the industrial, commercial areas where the big-box retail is, the 24-hour fitness, all of those little businesses that are down there, because I think there is an area where if we were to provide some, would amount to height bonuses or density bonuses to rely on greater height, we could probably spark more development than is currently taking place. And it's an area that I think would be far more acceptable to people in town than some of the other areas, which seem to be targeted by commercial development. So that's another, you know, change I'd like to see have brought back. Outdoor dining, I was pleased to hear Al say that there is, there is the ability, if we want, to basically regulate the intensity of outdoor dining use along, along Laurel Street. I'm okay, based on that, I'm okay with what staff is recommending. Personally, I'd like to see some language put in there saying, have staff come back with some language specifying some maximum limit of, you know, sort of what proportion of any given block can be devoted to outside dining, because I am concerned about making these long, narrow corridors that will be problematic for pedestrians. And then on the parking for restaurant space, I'm fine with accepting staff's recommendation of not including the outdoor dining space in the calculation, with the caveat that we really do need to have a more comprehensive parking plan for downtown, because effectively what we've done is, you know, previous councils years ago did a very smart thing by relaxing the parking requirements. It jump-started the development of Laurel Street, bringing in a lot of great restaurants, a lot of great, a lot of great businesses. If we don't do something to foster, I keep coming back to private-public partnerships to create more parking opportunities, basically we have the problems of success right now. We're sort of strangling ourselves with, with not having enough parking, and unless we do something specific, what's going to happen is the pressure's just going to grow for the city to have to divert scarce capital resources to create more parking, create more, you know, free parking. And that concerns me, just because I want to keep a vital downtown, but I also don't think that that should be the sole province of the city to have to be responsible for basically subsidizing the commercial activity there forever. So those were my, I think, one, two, three, four, five comments and suggested changes.
All right. Matt, you wanted to say something else?
Yeah, I, just as a discussion item, I think what, what Mark said about the fourth story and the change that he's, he's okay with, the thing that I see happening is, I think what Mr. Girdlestone was saying is, to some extent, these are, it's almost a non-issue unless you could consolidate enough properties, because it's hard to put in buildings downtown that get very tall, because you have to provide the parking, and the parking simply isn't there, so.
Through, may I respond just briefly? I agree with you, Matt, but, you know, for example, my understanding of what John Baer is thinking of doing with buying the property at Chury and El Camino, is he's going to create an adjacent satellite parking. So there are ways to basically allow a building on Laurel to go very high, and given that possibility, if the council agrees with the idea of not having Laurel become a canyon, I'd like to have separate restrictions in there.
And you, so you're then okay with the conditional use permit?
I am, I'm okay with the proposal, with the caveat that I would like the council to direct staff to go back and study this issue of what I keep calling the canyon shadow effect in more detail, and come back with, if necessary, either additional proposals to deal with the potential problem, or prove to me that it's not a problem. I'm, I'm willing to be convinced of that. I just want to see the analysis.
All right. All right. Any other comments before I ask Mark about his motion? So I guess at this point, how do you want to amend your motion or change it?
Well, through the chair. Could I make a suggestion? It may not work.
Absolutely.
There's a list here of 56 items. So I would suggest, and again, maybe this is the wrong way, you just go one, two, I know it's going to take a little bit, but you're going to have to, there's three of them I'm not going to vote for. So you go down, one, everybody good, one, two, we don't have to vote, you just nod, okay? Three, four, five, I can't do it. So you pull that one off. So in other words, the motion will be, the motion will just carry with all the 40 or 40 of them, there are 55 of them. And it's just a suggestion, if someone has a better one, I'm willing to, you know, go for that. I'm just trying to identify how I not vote for three of these. Does that make sense?
If I might make a suggestion, I think, yeah, I think you've gone through two of the council members, so if you just want to state your three.
Sure.
I'll keep track of them.
All right.
And then at the end, I'm going to read them back to you.
Okay. That's fine. Number five, I don't have, do you have that sheet? Well, anyway, I'll mention it. It's the clarify common area dimensions in R M zoning district. It's a 15, 20 setback, or whatever that is. That's number five. And then number 13, which is the modify the applicability requirement H overlay district, which is, staff and planning commission have recommended 19.9, and I think it should stay at where it is, 10%. And the last one is the one that I think staff is recommending that we not vote for, number 52, the parking requirements for, for outdoor dining, 250 square feet. Those are the three.
You're in favor of that?
No. Those are the, staff indicated that they felt they, we should vote no on that, and that's what I'm also going to do, vote no on that, because that's included, as I understand it, is, at least I found it, I found it on this, on these, on this motion. So those are the three that I'm going to vote no against. Thank you.
All right.
And through the chair, or Mr. Mayor? So I would say, you know, generally, I'm supportive of most of the staff recommendations. However, you know, as I stated in some of my questions, I really would like to see a bit more analysis on, you know, looking at the summary slide here, the, the land use regulations, number two, the minimum lot sizes, and the fourth story along Laurel Street. You know, I am skeptical about going up to 50 feet on Laurel Street, and I don't necessarily think that that's what the public wants, but I would like to get a bit more information about what impact that would have from an economic perspective, and, and given, you know, one of the speakers brought up about the demand for Class A office space in town, in downtown, I'd like to at least have a bit of an understanding of that. So, so that's my perspective. I'd like to see, I would like to see those brought back with a bit more analysis of how likely they are to occur, if ever, and if so, what would be the, the economic impact.
Through the chair?
Yes.
If I may ask, Cameron, are, do you, are you okay with, sort of in the interim, with staff's proposal of requiring a conditional use permit for it, or do you not want to even do that until you have more data?
I, you know, and to some degree, I agree with the speaker's characterization, which is, you know, this is, this zoning's been on the books, I've come to understand, since 1959, and nothing has been built that's 50 feet high, so it seems to me unlikely that, you know, tomorrow, somebody's going to come in and want to build up to 50 feet. So I, I just think we have time to think about it and to have a more thoughtful discussion it does, and to really understand what the trade-offs are in light of, you know, demand for office space, Wheeler Plaza going in, you know, the, the change in downtown. Unless staff wants to tell me that there's, you know, someone about to come to the desk and apply for a permit for 50 feet, I, I think it would be worth thinking about it, so.
All right. Mark, did you have a, you looked like you wanted to say something else?
We, yeah, I did. Actually, I guess what I will point out is, while my understanding is it was withdrawn, the reason I even learned about the way the zoning currently is structured on Laurel Street is somebody did bring forward a proposal, and, and that's what caused me to tell Jeff, it's like, whoa, wait a minute, I'm personally, I'm very uncomfortable with that, I have no idea where the rest of the council is, we, we better make sure that that gets factored into the discussion. So it's kind of a little bit like the discussion we had with a hotel, I can't tell you that there's something out there, but it, you know, there was one attempt already, or one, one interest, one level of interest already.
Through the mayor, if I, if I may, just for point of clarification, in terms of an economic study on the issue of the fourth-floor conditional use permit, you know, we could certainly do that, but I don't, I don't think the economic analysis is going to be really all that robust, since it's still an allowed use, it's just with a conditional use permit. So you're not, you wouldn't be saying no to a fourth floor tonight, you'd be saying it requires a permit, so the analysis would really be focused on the permit process itself, the time and cost of going through that process to apply for a fourth floor, as opposed to if you were, you know, restricting a fourth floor altogether tonight, we could were, you know, restricting a fourth floor altogether tonight, we could look at the economics of a fourth floor versus a third floor. So I just want to be clear that we're, in terms of what you're looking for, so that we give you the right economic analysis study.
Right. I mean, I sort of take it as a presumption, I mean, what I would be interested in personally, and I don't want to occupy too much time here, and I don't know if my colleagues share the interest in this, but it is, is basically the presumption that the conditional use permit applications would be turned down, and so that it's an effectively, if we were to effectively say you can't build higher than three stories, what, what impact would that have?
Right. And so without, you know.
Sort of a conservative analysis.
Right. Exactly. And that's, that's where I thought you would want to go with it, and I just wanted to make that clarification.
All right. Any other questions, additions, comments? All right, Jeff, maybe you could help us decide what it is we're voting on.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I will do my best here. Why don't we, why don't we take the issues that would come back, since, you know, the council will just be giving direction on those right now and not, you know, they're not really wrapped up in the motion per se. So to come back, Councilmember Grokot has suggested looking, having the staff and planning commission look at the use of dog kennels and/or animal shelters, that type of use in proximity to residential neighborhoods in San Carlos. So that's one. And I don't know if you, you know, want to just kind of give a thumbs up or do a straw poll, or how you want to do this.
Just as a point of clarification, Jeff, would that go directly to the planning commission, or would it come to the council?
I think these, any of these land use changes that we're talking about should go to the planning commission before they come back to the city council. They should just basically have their own new process.
I'm fine on sending that to the planning commission.
Me too.
All right.
So that one is in. Another minor, this would, oh, here, I'll come back to that because it's a minor tweak. Coming back now from Councilmember Olbert, he would like to see the city conduct some type of shadow study for the historic downtown core of Laurel Street and bring back not only the study, but any potential recommendations in terms of land use change that the study may indicate that the staff want to recommend or the planning commission recommends. So that would, that would go actually back to the staff to do work. We may have to come back with an item to approve some cost on that, but we would begin that process.
All right. Another straw poll, I assume?
I'm in favor of it.
Cameron? That's a no? Matt?
Yeah, yes. The thing I could see, maybe I'd be asking too much, but I, I could see also being a part of that, this, this idea again of what's it take to, you know, how much property do you have to consolidate in order to get a big enough footprint so you can put in the parking, so you can go four floors and so forth? Because it's more than just a shadow study, it's, it's, you know, how do you put this together? I think it's doable for the right development company, but what are we looking at?
Are you going, you'd come back to us with the scope of that study?
Yeah, I mean, this, you're basically floating a concept that's going to require a lot of work that will come back, you know, and, like I said, just to get some money on the scope of the study?
Through the chair, I disagree with my colleagues on this one. I'm going to say no to bring it back. I think we should wait till it happens if someone wants to build a fourth story, because this is not, shadowing, I mean, if I'm, I read the newspapers in San Francisco, this is huge. I mean, this could go on, you could, you could write volumes on shadows. And I, I mean, we're, I really disagree with the fact that, I mean, we can study things till the cows come home, but we don't have 50 people sitting out here on our staff. I think there's a lot more important things that they need to be doing. So I would wait till someone actually came in with a fourth story, and then I agree with both my colleagues on shadowing and accumulation of property, but I vote no to, to give the staff any more work to do on this one.
I'm with Bob.
Mr. Mayor? My feeling is I'd rather do the, I'd rather do the work now. So I, I agree with Matt and Mark. All right.
Okay. So next, we have to come back in the future looking at height and density allowed on Old County Road near Holly Street, and I think we understand the geographic parameters of the area that Councilmember Olbert was talking about.
Okay.
I still like the idea.
You still like the idea? Cameron?
Can you, I apologize, could you just quickly restate the rationale?
My, my concern is that, think, think of the concerns that, that have come up in, some of the concerns that have come up about the high school being in that area, okay? Traffic impact. We, we took a fairly difficult step to try and do something to improve traffic flow through there in anticipation, in recognition of the problems that existed, and anticipation of already known development was going to cause additional burdens in the future. And so to then augment that by having even higher density development than it currently exists there add to that problem is a concern to me.
Right. So, I mean, this is kind of the argument that the, even if the high school doesn't go in, that a, an apartment building could go in there?
An office.
An office, an office building, yes.
Yeah, I'm, I would be fine looking at that, or having the planning commission look at it.
Yeah, I, I would be too. I would, yeah. In terms of priority, I would see it down the list. Because I just don't think.
The list is getting longer, guys, just remember.
Always work to be done.
Yeah, there's always work to be done, that's true.
I think that's a go.
Job for life out there, gentlemen.
Good. So that's a go. Also, to come back from Councilmember Olbert, staff to propose increasing height and density in certain areas of the city, and I interpreted those certain areas through your comments to be areas not impacting residential areas of the city or not impacting other existing commercial uses, it would be a conflict of, you know, heavy industrial.
There would be a conflict, my primary, my primary constraint was on residential stuff, so this, that's what I keep referring to as the southeast corner of the city.
I have a question for staff, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. You didn't ask, I was going to ask, so go ahead.
Okay. It seems to me that in, in some regards, we already have a process in place for something like that, because if an applicant wanted to come to us, say they bought a couple of properties in the area Mr. Olbert's talking about, and wanted to treat it as a PUD, I think is the term, they could do that and look for extra height?
That's correct. Yes. So we do already have a process in place that allows flexibility for extra height on a case-by-case basis. Yeah, so it'd go to the planning commission and the city council. Pamp is a good example, that's an 80, 90-foot building with a 50-foot height in the zoning, but it was granted by the city council on a case-by-case basis, yes. So that is in place.
Thank you.
If I may, the, the, one of the things I'm, I'm learning about going through land use stuff is, to a very great extent, a greater extent than I originally anticipated, a lot of land use is signaling. It's marketing. In other words, we have rules, but if somebody wants to apply for an exception, they can apply for an exception. We may, we do not have to grant it, we may or may not choose to do that. So to me, even though the process exists to allow for higher, higher heights and densities in the southeast portion of the city, to me, the value of making the change formally is to signal, is to signal that's something we would like to see happen. I don't know if the rest of my colleagues feel, you know, how you feel about that. This all traces back to that joint EDAC council meeting that we had last summer where this issue came up, and it was a bit of a surprise to me, and I recall both Jeff and Al saying, if you were to, if you were to grant the ability to build bigger buildings in there, no question would you spark more development money coming in there, more redevelopment. And to me, that would be a good thing to do.
If I, if I may, to, you know, just qualify that a little bit, I think that if you were, you know, as a community, we, we just went through the general plan and zoning process where we did look at the intensity and height and, and economics of the entire industrial, commercial area, and we analyzed it too, in an EIR for the, for the general plan, and it allows for, you know, between 1 and 2 million square feet of commercial, new commercial development on the east side there. In order to go above that, that cap, it would be a very substantive general plan-type land use study that would, and you'd, you'd need to engage the community once again, and it's a extreme, extremely costly and time-consuming process to go through. It would maybe a specific plan, it could take a considerable amount of time and effort. Now, I would agree that, that when the community does something like a landmark zoning, it signals to the marketplace that we're open for business. I think that our current general plan and zoning allows, has, has built in a lot of flexibility, and I think the marketplace knows that. And I don't think that anything is slowing down the marketplace in the city of San Carlos in terms of what the development community wants to do. It's a matter of your review on a case-by-case basis. So I just wanted to qualify that to kind of, as a practitioner, you know, just kind of saying, here's, here's, you know, you're, you're talking about a very considerable amount of work, which you could do if you decided to. Thank you.
Through the chair, I, I appreciate Al clarifying that because we obviously do need to be concerned about resource constraints. I'll just note in passing that I appreciate the information, but that's a very different painting of the picture than I was given last year when we had that EDAC discussion and the subsequent discussions I had. So.
Yeah, and I'm going to chime in here just a second too, because I don't want it to appear that, that the staff would be throwing a wet blanket on this. There's, there's really no reason that we could not, in this process, go back and look at additional height for the zoning in areas of the city. That's not to say that, you know, we wouldn't have to amend the general plan at some point, particularly for the, you know, if we're going to be bumping up against the maximum allowable office square footage in the city. It's just another touchstone, should the council want to take a look at that. And I know from time to time on some of the different subcommittees, this issue's come up a number of times over the last year, where council members would like to see more intensive, particularly office-based uses in parts of our town. So that's sort of how I, I see this and, and folding this into the process as we go forward.
Matt?
Yeah, I, I think, given everything that's been said, that's something I would back away from. I was going to joke, maybe about the time we consider renaming Terminal Way to Olbert Way, we could look at these height increases, but.
I think I have to die first for that to happen, right? Hopefully, that'll be a long time in the future.
All right. Well, go ahead, Cameron.
I, I would say that this is something that I've been a strong proponent of, so I would like to see in whatever the appropriate forum is, and I, I know we've talked about it at a number of strategic planning meetings and, you know, many retreats and things like that, but I do think there's opportunity for more, you know, think of it as another circle star, which is a great thing for our community, so I'd like to see us look at it.
All right. So far, we're, I guess we are two and two, but, and, and I, myself talked to Al, and it sounds to me, just to kind of summarize this, sum it up, is that we have a lot of activity right now, we have a lot of interest. Whatever the zoning situation is at this moment, it's not slowing down applications. Do I understand that correctly? We've got a lot of interest. And if we did have somebody said, we want to go 100 feet, we'd look at it, or at least we would then consider changing the zoning at, at that point. I mean, Mark and Cameron, I, I actually agree with, with your, with your sentiments. I'm just not sure at this point, it seems that it's necessary, unless somebody has another compelling reason.
Mr. Mayor?
To point it out. Yes.
Let me offer a, a slightly tweaked suggestion, which is that we ask staff to go back, kind of following off of what Jeff said, we ask staff to go back and look at what, if anything, they could do that's easy to do, that would accomplish some portion of what the idea entails. In other words, what I thought I heard Jeff say is that there may or may not be some things that we could do that, that wouldn't require a lot of staff time. And I'm only suggesting that because, because as I said, the news about what the footprint was of doing this is a very different message than what, what I heard in the discussions last year. And I'd rather not let go of the idea before I find out just how intensive it is. If it is very intensive, fine. I, I personally still would do it, but then we could at least make a better decision.
Mr. Mayor, I'll give you another spin on this. This isn't saying you're going to do this, this is saying we're going to take a look at it. And while it's certainly true that on a case-by-case basis, any application can come in and, and ask for a variance or, you know, a, a plan development like PAMP, but having been here when we were working on PAMP, PAMP was an incredibly intensive process, both for the staff, the council, and the community in looking at that specific issue. So if there's a chance there's an area of the city where the council and the community would have an interest in increasing heightened density, it would actually save us time to identify that area and build it into the zoning as opposed to doing it on a case-by-case basis.
All right. So you think this might not be such a bad idea, then?
I think the initial step is not a bad idea.
All right. Okay. I'll go along with that. All right. So I guess we're, we're including that then.
Thank you.
All right. All right.
Okay. Moving on, I'm going to take these next two out of order. Councilmember Olbert's last item, I don't believe was actually either a minor tweak tonight or a future item. I think it was a reinforcement of what Al said earlier, which is, you know, you want a downtown parking, a comprehensive downtown parking study to take place, and.
If I may, I know I hit you with a lot of things. That is correct. I agree with your, your summary, there's really nothing that I'm asking to do about that. I, I did ask on the outdoor dining.
That's correct. That's, that's the one I took out of order.
Fine.
So on the outdoor dining, and I'm going to have a little bit of a conversation here with Al on the fly, you were asking for some sort of description. Al had mentioned 300 feet, 500 feet, like banks and nail salons, just as an example. You had talked about a percentage of the block. Is, what's the consequence of approving this tonight, but without any, without any restrictions, and then coming back and placing, should we just take, should we just table this item and come up with those restrictions and then bring it back?
Yeah, that's what I was suggesting, because I think you need to talk to the business community, you need to talk to the restaurants in the, the chamber about this before you make a decision on it, and get their input.
Okay. So this would be, this would fall into both categories, but it would actually be a tweak tonight because you're taking something out, so we'll, we'll circle back around to that.
I'm sorry, only if there's two other people who think we ought to do that.
Okay. What I was suggesting is I still have to go through the tweaks, and I'm going to come back to that one a second time.
Fair enough.
From that perspective. Okay. So moving on to Councilmember Grisilli, this would fall into the tweak category because it would change the motion before you tonight, and that was to, and I'm going to ask Al and Lisa to help me with a little bit more description here, but I believe you said it was item number five on the list, which had to do with common area dimensions that you'd like struck from the motion? Can you give us a, can you come to the mic and give us just a little bit of description so the council is reminded of what this item is specifically?
Yes. In the, in the zoning ordinance for the RM zoning district, the RM is of course for multifamily type of residential housing development. Within the development standards for multifamily housing development, there's a certain amount of land area that's required for common open space, places for, space on the property for people to congregate. And right now, the requirement is that the horizontal distance be 20 feet, so 20 feet in all directions. That's the minimum distance required for common open space. Oftentimes, developers want to use the backyard area to satisfy their requirements for that common open space area. They look at the setback. The city is already allowing a rear yard setback of 15 feet. So if, so the intent of this modification is to allow some flexibility to meet the dimensional requirements for common open space. So where you already have that 15-foot setback, that would be the minimum amount required. So instead of 20 by 20, it could be 15 by 20. Otherwise, the alternative would be to, you know, just change the rear yard setback from 15 to 20 feet. So we're trying, trying to provide some flexibility to applicants in meeting this common, common open space area dimensional requirement. And I don't think I have a graphic for that, sorry.
So I think the discussion here is about tweaking the motion to remove that item from the motion for approval tonight.
So Bob, given Lisa's further explanation.
I'm voting no on this one, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
I apologize. I, I thought it fizzed out at the beginning. I'm voting no on all those three. So however you want to do it, that's why I didn't know that we needed a discussion on it, except for if somebody else might want to vote no also, but that's fine.
You're voting on removing them, so.
I'm voting on removing them, not tweaking them, not yanking them.
That's correct.
Is it, for my own edification, because I have to admit, my reaction when I read this was, okay. this was, okay. Your concern is, just because maybe you can convince me to vote no?
Flexibility is the word that I heard. I don't want to be flexible on this. That's what staff just said, flexibility. And so, if somebody has to make their house a little bit smaller or whatever, gee, that's okay with me. That's where I'm coming from. Maybe I just, well, looked at this individually, and so...
I appreciate your sharing.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm not anticipating anybody to join me on any of these three, but I just, you know, wanted to make my comment, so...
All right, so, let's get the pleasure of the council on this one.
This would be an amendment to the motion, would require the maker and the seconder to...
Through the chair, I'm sorry, but if we don't, if we're not going to deal with these individually, we're going to put Bob in the position where he's going to vote against the entire motion.
It's one ordinance.
I understand, but like Mr. Olbert just said, you've got to vote, well, you don't have to, but you're going to vote against everything, and I don't...
Bob, you could propose an amendment, and we could have a quick roll call vote on it.
But he'll still end up voting against the entire resolution.
I'll vote against the motion. I can't vote, I'm not, I mean, I can, but I choose not to. I would hope you wouldn't put me in that position. That's what I'm saying. It's just like, to me, it's just like a consent calendar. You vote on all the consent items, yes, and these items are individually voted on, individually, not, or whatever. And again, maybe no one else has any no's on any of this. I guess it's, I don't hear any no's on any, but I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, would it be possible for me to amend my motion so that I exclude from the vote the three items that Bob wishes to vote no on, assuming the second is willing to concur with that, and then come back and vote on the three items separately? Or is that not possible, Jeff?
Well, ultimately, let me run a hypothetical, okay?
Sorry to bother you on this.
So, ultimately, let's just assume that the council disagrees with you, and they want all three of those things in the motion, so it's in the whole motion for the ordinance. You would have to vote the whole thing up and down, and I hear, so sort of what I hear you saying is, you want to be on the record as opposing those three things.
Right, that's exactly it.
So, I can flip it around for you, and you can go on the record in terms of supporting the removal of those three things by making a motion to amend, you know, asking for an amendment to the motion to remove those things you don't want to vote on. If it fails, you tried, and it's in the record, and if it succeeds, then it comes out of the ordinance that's going to be voted on tonight.
Can we hear all three?
Sure. Let's, the first one, just describe for you, and you're going to have to, I'm sorry, I would have told you to stay put. I think you said, you were talking fast at that point, and I think you said it was item 15?
Number 13, no, number 13 is the modify applicability requirement for the H overlay district, which is, recommendations to go from 10% to 19.9 on a hill, on a grade, 10% grade to 19.9.
And we'll give you a quick overview of that real quick to remind everybody what it's about.
Currently, lots that have an average cross slope of 10% have to abide by the standards in the city's hillside overlay zoning district. Some of those standards allow for a different height limit for homes that are built under the H overlay, and it also allows for deviation of the garage setback. If you're developing outside of the hillside overlay zoning district, you're limited to 28 feet in height, and your garage needs to be placed back 20 feet from the property line. If you're in the hillside overlay, you have a different height limit. You can go up to 35 feet, and your garage can be placed closer to the front property line within five feet. The intent of this modification is to restrict the hillside overlay for parcels that have a more substantial amount of topography on them. And the recommendation is to go from 10% to 19.9%, but looking at the building footprint and looking at the area from where the street ends, you know, or basically the property line, all the way to the front setback area. If those areas are 19% or more, then you are subject to the hillside overlay zoning district. And then those provisions for a different height and perhaps for a different location for your garage can come into play. So, we're just trying to better refine which parcels should be subject to the restrictions of the hillside overlay versus being developed under the base zoning district. That is why this modification has been developed.
Bob, it might help the council to understand your specific thoughts on this.
Now, the way you just explained it turned me all around, because I understood that I'm trying to make the building smaller. I'm trying to make the building smaller and not give anybody an advantage, and you're telling me now that they're not getting an advantage if we pass this?
Yeah.
I misunderstood that completely, if that's what you're telling me.
If we have a lower percentage of overall average cross slope, 10%, then more lots can be subject to hillside overlay, meaning they could be taller, the garages can be placed differently.
Right, so if you go to 19, you're saying it's less than 35 feet, then?
That's correct, yeah.
Today, I got completely turned around.
Okay, good, then I'm glad I could help clarify. Sorry about that.
Sorry, guys, keep going on this, but we started them all, I'll tell you what.
Okay, so that, five, 13, what was the other one?
The last one that I think we're, maybe we're not all going to agree on, but that staff has recommended that we vote no on 52, which is the established parking requirements for outdoor dining, which staff has indicated they don't want in there.
That's correct. This is the issue where the Planning Commission recommended additional parking requirements for restaurants with outdoor dining. Staff is not recommending that. What we're recommending is that gets wrapped into our parking study and looked at and brought back to you on its own.
And as I recall through the chair, it's not in the resolution, correct?
I find it in the resolution, or maybe I'm missing it. I find it, it's not? It's, well, there's, it's 1820.040, that's the last item on my sheet here, 8A, that I'm looking at, right here.
Okay. So, we'll check that and reconfirm.
If it's not, I'm wrong, but I'm reading it.
All right. Well, now that we're all just...
Through the chair.
Couple more.
I'm sorry.
All right, that's okay. Go ahead. Councilmember Grokot had suggested a minor tweak to the language around defining obstruction for the outside dining program to include specifically tree grates as obstacles.
That makes sense to me, through the chair.
Okay.
I mean, I don't oppose it, so that's fine.
Fine, okay.
So, you're giving your second to amend the motion.
So, a friendly amendment, so included in the mover and the seconder?
Yes.
Okay, and I think that brings us back to the issue of the outdoor dining program in terms of how much outdoor dining can take place, the proximity to one another. And so, the suggestion from staff there is that this item be removed from the motion for further definition and study if the council's so inclined to go with what Councilmember Olbert has suggested we look at.
All right, so, what's your thought?
So, sorry, can you give me a one-sentence refresher on what exactly you're proposing?
Long stretches of only four-foot-wide passageway, I've noticed on Laurel Street, end up being choke points and sort of very uncomfortable for pedestrians when there's a reasonable level of pedestrian traffic. And so, having a few along the way is one thing, having an entire block like that would be worse.
And my understanding from staff is we have the flexibility to control that under current zoning? Is that right?
Al, do we? I mean, this is a new proposal. Right, no, we don't have an ability to control it. So, this would be adding in a, because this is brand-new, so this proposal, and so the council member is suggesting that we come up with something so that not every restaurant could have outdoor dining?
Right.
And just figuring out what the right criteria is for that.
I'm not ready to support that at this time.
Through the chair, I think there's a, let's say Restaurant A closes, then all of a sudden, they reopen, they start over again, and then they lose their outdoor dining, I guess, if this thing went all the way through to the end. And all the restaurants right now are grandfathered in, right? But Mr. Zavala's audience, if one restaurant closes, it's now back to square one for them. Could be, yeah, I mean, depending on where they are in 300 feet. So, I'm not supportive of this one this evening.
Matt?
Yeah, I'd rather deal with it when it really becomes a problem, if it does.
All right.
Appreciate the sentiment.
Okay, well, I guess that one is...
That one's out.
That one's out.
Which brings us to the last one, I believe, which is the, from the vice mayor, which dealt with the economic analysis for fourth versus third floor in the core downtown, the changes in uses that were discussed tonight citywide and large parcel subdivision. My question for you is, are you suggesting that all those changes be removed tonight and tabled until after the economic analysis is done, which would be a very significant change to what we have before you? Or is this something that you're just looking to be studied and brought back in the future?
I was proposing that they... I was proposing that, yeah, we table them, do some further study, and come back.
Okay. So, that, everybody understand?
That would be a fairly significant...
Yeah, that would be a fairly significant...
That would be, yeah.
I'm not supportive of doing that in part. I appreciate the sentiment, as Matt had said about my earlier idea, but I don't support it in part because I do think some of these other things, it's important that we get out there quickly. And the other thing is, in my experience in doing financial economic analyses in a situation like this, I can pretty much prove whatever you'd like me to prove. So, I'm not sure that it actually adds a lot, other than, yes, it's going to be a restriction on value. I get that, or likely to be a restriction on value even, that's not certain.
Through the chair, I can't support it this evening either.
Well, that one's out.
Okay, so we'll take that one out. Okay, so that brings us back to, we're really narrowing this down, we're getting close. We've got, we included the amendment for item number five already, so we'd need to amend the motion for the minor tweak on the language, and we'd need to amend the motion for the outdoor parking requirement, to remove that from, I think, or did we confirm whether or not that was in the resolution or not?
Was it in the thing?
We looked at the, the title of the resolution refers to the code section, and that was a carryover, I believe, from the Planning Commission, so that you had the flexibility, if you wanted to add that provision, you could, but it's not in the actual exhibits attached to the ordinance, there's no change proposed.
Just on this piece of paper?
Yes.
Okay, fine, that's fine.
So, we just need the tweak on the sidewalk language, and...
Don't I need to make, to get this, I apologize for having my colleagues drag through this, at least on my end. You want me to just make a motion to say, to remove number five, and if there's no second, then I'll just end up voting for the entire thing to make it simple? Is that what you want me to do? That's the easiest way to go?
Yeah, that would be the easiest thing.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we, amend the motion rather to remove number five from the introduction of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, just because I want to hear what the discussion on that is.
We already talked about it. I just, it's a matter of size of houses, and if people have to build a smaller house...
That's okay, we can have to vote on the amendment, not a problem.
All right. Okay. Go ahead. Crystal, go ahead.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
No.
Mayor Collins?
No.
So, through the chair, I will then vote for the other item, so it'll be simpler and clean.
All right. So, I think we would just need a motion to amend the main motion on the floor with the sidewalk language.
Oh, okay, so you want me to do that?
The grates, right.
All right. Through the mayor, I looked up what section you'd want to change to make that tweak to the ordinance, and it's, there's two sections where we're referring to the sidewalk area, and it's section 18.23.140D2, and then there's 18.23.140D3B. That probably what I think you're intending to do is add the term "tree grate" to the list of clearance areas where you want to have clearance from.
Yes.
And that's the only change I think you need to do, if that's the intent of the council.
We're introducing the ordinance anyway, so if we don't get it quite right...
We can do typographical changes on the adoption night.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that, that in sections 18.23.140D2 and 18.23.140D3B, reference be made to tree grates relative to clearance.
Second. All right, I think we're ready.
And just for the motion, this is ordinance 1480. So, Councilmember Grisilli?
Sorry.
This is just an amendment.
Are we voting on the amendment?
No, we're voting on the amendment, not the main motion.
Not the main motion. Just the amendment.
Okay, so Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so I think you have your motion outlined with just the one change before you, so to the main motion which you've included, so...
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to say that I'm going to be voting no, because I would like to see that economic analysis, but I do think there's a lot of really positive things in the motion, so...
Okay, so noted. Anybody else? All right, Crystal?
So, Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
All right. Well, that was a nice piece of sausage. All right, next, new business, consideration of renaming Laurel Street Park, the Frank D. Harrington...
Excuse me, miss...
Oh, I'm sorry.
There is one more ordinance to introduce.
There's one in chapter three.
All right, sorry to jump the gun there. That was the second one there. That's the, introducing the next ordinance?
The revenue and finance ordinance change, that's a much smaller...
All right, we need a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce ordinance number...
1481.
1481, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos adopting amendments to revenue and finance, Title III, Chapter 3.36, parking exception fund of the San Carlos Municipal Code.
One second. Through the chair, the way that the ordinances are numbered, isn't the first two digits the year?
No, that's for resolutions.
Okay, fine, just wanted to check. Thank you.
All right. Are we ready for a vote? All right?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
All right, now I think we're done with that one. Now, moving along to item 9A, consideration of renaming Laurel Street Park to Frank D. Harrington Park. Christine?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Christine Bolen, Parks and Recreation Director. It's my pleasure to present this this evening. As Mayor Collins recommended last meeting, and as the title suggests, staff is recommending that Laurel Street Park be renamed after the late Frank D. Harrington. Mr. Harrington was a longtime beloved volunteer in the community. He served most recently as a community service officer for many, many years, and actually refused any sort of compensation for his services. I've provided many details about his background in your written materials, as well as the council's 1990 policy on naming public facilities and buildings. That basically concludes my brief presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, and there are probably a couple public speakers on this issue. Also, Chief Rothus is here if you need any other details about Mr. Harrington's service.
Questions of Christine? Seeing none. Anybody have any questions for Captain Rothus? All right, well, we do have one speaker card, and that's Jenny Maloney. Hi, Jenny, again.
It's nice to be here with you, and I thank you all for the service that you give to our city. Nobody ever acknowledges you guys. Anyway, this is an awe-inspiring evening for the city of good living, which we are. I have never done this before, but I have never known anyone like Frank, who gave so much to all of us. He dedicated 40-plus years to our community without compensation to make our city the best it ever is. As a business in Laurel, on the Laurel Street, I recognize and acknowledge how Frank had his fingers on the pulse of our city. It all started with, "How's it going?", always by name. If you think about Frank, when he greeted you, he knew everybody's name. You know, "How you doing, Jenny? How you doing, Greg?" And, "What's new?". You talk about information gathering for somebody in the community. He knew what was unsaid. He just knew who should be there and who shouldn't. The city of good living is just that, thanks to all the efforts of our community service clubs, the educational foundation, hometown days, wine festival, chickens' ball, and countless volunteers, that all match Frank's unspoken hours of years of service to anybody. There's one thing for sure, the happy streets will be quiet. There's nobody out there now to call out to Frank, or Frank to call across the street, "Hi", whether it be Laurel or St. Carlos Avenue, everybody did, and the horns of them cars that always pass by that tooted to Frank. They'll be quieter streets in St. Carlos. So I respectfully request that you consider Laurel Street being named after Frank, and we'd like to offer a check to help offset the cost to the park and wreck, if that's possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Thank you very much. All right, does anyone else wish to speak? All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we rename Laurel Street Park to Frank D. Harrington Park.
A second.
All right. Is there any, anyone wish to, any of my colleagues wish to make any comments? Well, I'll just sum it up with the fact that, at some point along the way, Frank knew who I was, and I never really found out how, but he knew me, and that was really kind of special, and my wife and I always enjoyed seeing him downtown, and it seemed like every Starbucks I walked into, he was usually there, or I saw him at some other point in town. He will be greatly missed. Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Moving along to item 9B, consideration of authorizing Mayor to sign and send a letter from the City of San Carlos to the Sequoia Union High School District regarding the location of a potential high school in San Carlos.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Jeff Malpey, City Manager. Before you this evening is a draft letter. At your last council meeting, council had asked to have such a letter put on the agenda for your discussion. In its creation, I think the effort's been made to strike a balance between having a good working relationship with our high school district, which I think we all want, and we have a great deal of respect for those folks and what they're doing and the issues that they're dealing with, and balancing that with the council's discussion at our last meeting and comments that we've heard from our community and our staff members about the current location on Old County Road as perhaps not being the very best location for this type of intensive use, given its proximity to our L'Oreola Park, the L'Oreola Neighborhood, and traffic along Old County Road and Holly. So we'd be happy to hear your comments about the letter and make any changes you'd like before we prepare a final draft for the mayor to sign, if that's the council's prerogative tonight.
All right. Any questions of staff on this? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute and forward the attached letter to the Sequoia Union High School District.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion.
Just, Mr. Mayor, if I may, a quick process question. I support sending this letter. The, are we, is it contemplated that we're going to have any subsequent discussions about what we wish to do on next steps in terms of directing staff? Is there anything we want them to do? I'm just unclear about that. I have no problem with the letter, but I'm wondering what else, if anything, we're doing.
So am I.
So the direction that we've been given is to prepare a letter, so there really aren't any next steps that the council has directed us. You know, we've met with the high school district, we continue to, in our conversations, as they've kept us in the loop, to mention our willingness to help them look for property. We've told them that, you know, if anything's brought to our attention that we hear, you know, maybe going on the market, the type of rumors that we often hear at City Hall, that we would certainly pass that along. But that would be the extent right now of what we're doing in terms of working on this issue.
Anybody have any comments on the language of the letter?
I think it strikes just the right chord, myself, with what it says.
All right.
The only thing that, well, having said that, the, I don't know if I'd really recommend a change to it, but it, the last sentence in, the last couple of sentences, in inviting the district to have discussion with us, it just doesn't have quite the punch I would hope for in trying to get them to come to the table and have some discussion. But having said that, I can't think of anything at this hour of how else I would say it.
All right. Anybody else?
Well, I'll just say, you know, I strongly support taking this action. I think, you know, this is a case in which it would have been better for the high school district to have engaged with the community earlier and getting, get some feedback from the community about the specific location. I'm supportive of the idea of the high school district building a high school in San Carlos. I think it would be good for students, I think it'll be good for the high school district. But this is not a great location, and so we don't have a huge amount of legal authority to influence that, and so I think the best we can do in this case is to simply send what I hope is a unanimous sense of the council, that we'd like them to consider alternate locations, and that we would be willing to work with them to help facilitate that.
All right. Matt, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I suppose, you know, that in addition to sending the letter, we could ask the city manager, or, you know, perhaps you as the mayor, or perhaps both, so they get a sort of double-barrel approach. It's just a, after it's been sent, follow-up on it, you know, perhaps if you contacted the board president, and if the city manager would get in touch with his parallel person at the Sequoia Union High School District, just to say, "Did you get the letter? Any comment? Could we meet?", that kind of thing.
All right. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we discussed putting this topic before us in an earlier meeting, I know, I think I had mentioned the comment about hopefully having a discussion beyond just sending a letter. Again, no problem sending a letter, agree with everything that Cameron said. The thing that I had hoped that we'd have a chance to talk about, see whether or not there's interest in this, is it is correct to say that we have relatively little legal authority to do anything here. They are a parallel government agency, they can do it basically, whatever they want to do. But we could, if we wanted to, take a less reactive stance. A more proactive stance might be, for example, requesting that staff invest some time, working with them, working with the school district, to understand what is it that perhaps turned them off on some other alternative properties that might be more desirable from our point of view, to see if there's anything that we could do to kind of bridge the gap, to make it more acceptable to them. Have no idea what that could be, have no idea what would be necessarily involved in it, but that's an example of a more proactive step that we could take, that doesn't really run afoul of their legal authority to do whatever they want, it just says, "We actually are concerned enough about this that we want to try and do what we can."
And if I may, you know, I think we have taken a number of proactive steps. I mean, you and I have met with the superintendent, I've talked to a couple of the board members myself, I know that Al Seve met with, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Al met with their realtor. So we have devoted both council and staff time. I'm not opposed to doing more, but I personally would like to see, you know, what the response is to the letter. There has been some indication from the high school board already that they're prioritizing the other location first, and putting San Carlos a little bit on the back burner, I think, in response to some of the concerns that have been raised by the community. So I do think the response that the community has taken, the council's taken, the staff has taken, have had some impact so far, and I think it would be interesting to see what their response is, particularly if there's a unanimous vote tonight, and see, you know, again, I think the door is always open to any kind of conversations that we might have.
All right. Well, I'm in support of sending the letter, obviously. There's only one part of it that kind of worries me, and that's the part that we talked, where we mentioned sharing remediation costs for a more appropriately located site. I don't know what that means. It almost sounds like it's a potentially, you know, a sort of a slippery slope. What do we mean by remediation costs? What's our response when the district says, "Sure, let's do that"? Maybe I could get some, maybe anybody else, somebody else has some thoughts on that, but that's, my only concern is that there's the sharing remediation costs clause in there. It just leaves, I think it just exposes us, and that's what concerns me.
Mr. Mayor, may, my perspective on, I think what's, the way I interpreted this, is it's an example of a type of discussion that we might potentially have. In other words, and one has to read it in the context of, yes, on the one hand, it tees up the concept of some form of investment from the city, but the other part of it is clearly saying there's a quid pro quo for that. In other words, we're not just willing to just do it willy-nilly, we're saying that we would be open to a discussion if there was something in it for us, okay? Something other than having the high school built. And I suspect the thinking was precisely because, basically, the district doesn't have to pay any attention to what we say, that it's a way of sort of saying, you know, under the right circumstances, there's an ante up that we may consider doing. Anyway, that's my interpretation.
Through the chair, I agree with Mr. Obert. You're basic, when you say you're just, you're open to discussions. I mean, we should be open to discussions about everything, and I think that's...
I don't have a problem with that, but maybe, Greg, maybe, maybe I'm overthinking this. Is it, is this, is it a problem including that? Are we opening ourselves up for anything?
I look at this letter as just an opening to, and that provision itself, I think, is talking about, everything is on the table in our discussions, and these are examples of things that you're willing to talk about. So I don't think we're bound by that at all. I don't think if, I mean, you can't really make that decision now, anyway, because there's so many variables that might be involved, but, you know, I think, opening, saying you're open to discussions is sort of like saying, well, it depends on what the problem is. I mean, I think you have to look at all that in the future.
Then we're not necessarily committing ourselves to anything. All right. Okay. Well, have we had a motion?
Yeah.
We have had a motion. All right, is there any more discussion on sending this letter, then? All right. Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, 9C, consideration of adopting a resolution adopting the long-term financial plan. Rebecca?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is the consideration of the adoption of a resolution adopting the long-term financial plan. This is a strategic plan objective, and the funding to prepare this plan was included in the adopted budget. The city hired public financial management to assist us in the development of this plan, and Russ Branson from PFM is here tonight and has a short presentation for you on the plan and the findings.
Right, great. Thank you, Rebecca. Mayor, councilmembers, I want to give you just a brief overview of what we did on our long-range plan and our findings, as Rebecca said. The goals was to look at the city's near and long-term financial position. So we took a 20-year look at both revenue and expenses, the ability the city to sustain operations and current service levels, ability to absorb negative changes to revenues and expenses over time, and also the ability to pay for the city's unfunded CIP list. Purpose of long-range planning, there's really, you know, two purposes. One is strategic, to help you make decisions, to help executive staff as they're making proposals, to understand the decisions they're trying to make. There's also financial, see if you have structural balance issues in your budget, and help to evaluate the long-term consequences of current decisions by the council. So to do that, we, the way we approach this is, first, we do a baseline forecast. The baseline forecast effectively says, all things kind of remain the same with your, with the economy, with the structure of your budget, given other things that we know that are increasing, like PERS rates or changes, you know, we know sales taxes going up, things of that nature. We do a forecast on a 20-year basis, we call that a baseline forecast. We did align this with the city's five-year forecast, which is included in the budget, and that does include some development over the next few years, including the Transit Village, Wheeler Plaza, and Landmark Hotel. So those are included in our baseline forecast as well. As you know, key budget drivers for the, revenue drivers for the city are property taxes, sales taxes, charges for service. Those combined make about 65% of the revenues, and those revenues are subject to both economic conditions, as well as they are impacted by development as it occurs as well. On the expense side, you have about half of your budget goes towards public safety contracts, those are contracted out. So the police with the sheriff, San Mateo County Sheriff, fire with Redwood City, and you have a legacy PERS obligation for unfunded liabilities you're retaining of about 9%. So overall, that's about half of your budget are for those public safeties, about 20%, for salaries. I want to talk about a little, a few other, a couple of things. We talked about our results of our baseline forecast. One is PERS. The city has done a lot over the last several years to get, implement different PERS-tiered rates, as well as the state's pepper law, which changed, which lowered, or lowered the retirement formula for any new employees coming online. And with all those in place of the next 20 years, we actually expect the city's normal costs for pensions to remain fairly flat, and the normal cost is the cost of your current employees, what you need to put aside to have enough money when they retire to be able to fund their retirement. Unfunded costs, on the other hand, are actually going up a little, so these are costs where the unfunded, the normal costs weren't enough in the past, and oftentimes, this is a result of changes in the market returns for PERS, or changes in the actuarial assumptions. And what you see is actually the unfunded costs will be going up through FY '19, and then there's, you have a series of drops as the city pays off its side funds for unfunded liabilities with various units. So overall, you have fairly stable PERS costs from what we can see right now. So with that, we had our baseline projection. Our baseline, this shows the result in terms of the impact on your fund. This is all positive, this is not always the case. In fact, it's not the case for many cities that we do work in, so this is always nice to see, that we look at, and it's a 20-year forecast, which is fairly long, so we go through 2021, and then we show the last kind of five-year increments. We're showing, just on the baseline of what you have now, we're showing positive funds coming from the city, revenues over expenses, and a big piece of it says, in 2020, 2021, you're getting paydowns of the side funds. So that helps with money coming into the general fund. We also look at alternative budget outcomes, because the baseline forecast, one thing we know about any forecast, it's probably... One is the economy, just ups and downs, recessions, good times, bad times, that'll bring you up and down. PERS rates are subject to what happens in return, market returns with all, with what they invest. Council decisions, a lot of what you decide, or what past councils have decided, impacts positively or negatively what happens in your budget in the future. So what you decide for compensation, number of staff needed, long-term maintenance and capital spending, some things you're considering right now, all have those kind of impacts. Voter-approved taxes or assessment, if you decide to do any of those. San Mateo County already has fairly high local option sales taxes at 9%. But there may be other things you might want to do to bring more money, to have specific programs in the city that you would do over time. And then cost of shared service contracts, and this is, we'll look at this just a little more, but changes in the cost of public safety contracts do have a significant impact in your budget. About, again, about 40% directly related to the contracts with San Mateo County and Redwood City. So we looked at, we tested a number of these changes, what would happen, kind of the what-if situations. And what is, we have in our baseline model, assumption that your contracts over time would grow a little faster than inflation, about 3%. And so what if that went from 3% to 4%? And you can see that the dark blue is our baseline forecast, the lighter blue on the left is our growth at 4%. And you start getting less revenue, and over time, as you move into about 10 years out, you could start having issues with balanced budgets. So it started eating away at your ability to fully fund your budget as you have it right now. So that means there's a, this is a risk in terms of something you have to watch, in terms of how fast those contracts grow, because it can have a big impact on your bottom-line budget. We also looked at no new economic development. You have some, as we, as I mentioned earlier, you have projects that are in the pipeline that are included in the forecast because they're in the process of being done. But what happens if there's some major economic issue that they weren't done? And it shows that you could have, if they, if you didn't complete Wheeler Plaza, the Landmark Hotel, this could have an impact, a near-term impact on your budget. And it also speaks to the importance of ongoing development and economic development, in terms of the strength of the city's budgetary process and ability to fund the services that you provide. We also looked at higher salary growth. In the baseline forecast, we assumed, on average, over a long period of time, that you grow about 2%, fairly consistent with long-term inflation trends. That would, you know, reality go up or down over the years. We said, well, what if that went from 2% to 3%? And again, if that's the only thing that changes, you actually have a lot of room to pay a little more and still have a positive fund balance through most of our projection period. And going into 2036, a lot will happen during that time, and you'll relook at this again. We also then took a couple of these different options and what-ifs and put them in a scenario. So one, we said, what, you know, pessimistic revenue, you have recession, every, if we did recession every seven years, we kind of looked at what happened in the Great Recession. St. Carlos wasn't as hurt by that as a lot of communities were, but you did have impacts. We said, what if we kind of reflect those every seven years to some extent? And then grow sales tax at, again, at kind of a long-term CPI level as opposed to the higher rates that are currently projected. And again, that showed that in about 10 years, you have a little trouble probably in 2019, but in about 10 years, you'd, you know, you would have some, you'd be looking at some possible budget deficits. Again, these are forecasts, and what this says to me is you have time to see something coming and react to it if things start changing, which is a very, a lot of cities don't have that option. Scenario two is increased costs. We look at, you know, what's the impact of both having higher salary growth as well as increased public safety costs? You know, and again, that very quickly narrows your margin, the positive amounts that the city would have in those years 2021. As the side funds are paid off, you kind of need to pay those off to stay ahead. So again, the, those cost factors, some which you control, some which you have a little less control over right now, could have a major impact on your budget in the next several years. So recommendations on the operating side, we looked at, we have three kind of primary recommendations. One is, you know, to maintain sustainable workforce costs. That means really looking carefully at salary increases and cost sharing for healthcare premiums, two things that could, you know, the healthcare premium's been going up significantly the last, you know, 10, 15 years, and they're projected to continue going up. And so those can have a cumulative effect along the salary increases on the city's budget over time. You're actively managing the public safety contracts, and I know that staff had to do that this, just this past fall with the Redwood City contract that went up little, initially looked like it was going to go up much higher than they expected. And so I think looking at those, and that's a major, I think, a risk factor within your budget, because you don't control all of those costs and the negotiations on the contracts for your police and fire. And lastly, fully fund the longevity recognition program. You have some money, so that's a, that's a other, what's called an other post-employment benefit. You have an unfunded liability. The city has been funding some of their retiree health, fully funding the annual required contribution. You need to kind of pay that off, and we suggest that you fully fund that. So it is an additional cost, but it avoids escalating pay-go costs, and then you get the value of investment returns, help reduce the overall cost of the program over time. And then capital funding. So one of the, one of the things we were asked to look at was the capital funding. The unfunded capital needs have actually increased a lot from last year. So currently, they stand at about $352.4 million over a number of community-wide projects, street projects, roadway corridor projects, and mobility, which I know you've all, you've all seen. So there's a lot of things on the city's plate that you, that you'd like to do, that you need to do, and how do you fund those? One question is, you know, can we fund it from, if you look at the excess general fund monies that are thrown off, as long, as well as the other revenues that the city already puts into, to fund capital? And those revenues, so those revenues include, you know, a number of things. So you have annual excess ERAF revenues. The city budget's about half of what you actually get, but those revenues are starting to get eaten away by changes in how the state allocates some money. And so those will probably, probably going down over the next 10 years. Parking lieu fees, franchise fees come into capital, that's your current budget practice. And so this also includes any excess money from general fund revenue, right? So what you can see is you get somewhere in the range of, you know, 45 to 52, 58 million dollars, depending on what our assumption, assumptions are for expenses and revenues, against about $352 million of expense. So you don't have, you probably won't have enough money to fund these items on a pay-go basis to actually fund them. And so we did look at debt funding options. So in order to fund these, what kind of debt funding options do you have? Topless is general litigation bonds, and I know the city's kind of pursuing, looking at that possibility for some things, hasn't decided what yet. And there's a, I think the library bond is in the process of being refunded to save some money. We also looked at one option the city has, is certificates of participation. These are actually lease agreements approved by the council. They do generally get paid for by general fund, and so it's probably one thing we wouldn't recommend you do, given some of the volatility, potential volatility we see in your general fund budget, because that does, you know, very hard obligation. But if there's something you really, you really wanted to do, and you couldn't get a GEO bond for it, or you didn't want to ask for a GEO bond, certificate of participation is an option that you have. I put in Melrose Community Facilities Districts, you do have some growth occurring, and those are things that typically you'd see more in a new growth or a larger growth area. And just as, just as a way of possibly looking as you have new development, are the things that the new development needs that you could get them to pay for in a Melrose, and that, those are taxes on those properties. Again, no specific recommendation, but an option we think you should stay open to. You know, and there's assessment districts. Assessment districts have been severely limited by Prop 218, in that you have to show special benefit to properties, not general benefits. So where a lot of cities had lighting and landscape districts that covered the entire city, you really can't institute those anymore because that's more of a general benefit than special. But for something like, and I think I'll mention it on the next slide, but for something like your drainage projects, you possibly could do an assessment district or something like that, because I think there, there's some special benefit you might be able to draw with that. So our recommendations on capital. One is, because that, the difference between what you, what you want and what you'll be able to fund, that you need to set funding priorities for projects. I know that's, this process is ongoing. To maximize pay-as-you-go funding, to really look at what you do, when you have excess money in your general fund, there's lots of ways to spend it, and there's lots of opportunities to spend it on different things. But to really look at, because you, because there is that disparity, to really look at doing, to maximize the pay-go funding from, from the general fund when you can. Extract revenue from new development, right? Look for opportunities to advance funding possibly. As new development comes on, there's oftentimes, there's a large economic value, there might be something the community needs that that new development can help out with as well, and maybe tick something off the, on the list, or some, a small thing off your list. You know, we talked about exploring financing opportunities. Pursue outside funding when available. I think especially if you're looking on interchanges or kind of the major roadways, there might be state or federal funds available, and there's, the city has done some of that, but I think there's still additional need. And because you don't have enough money to do all you want, you need to start looking for other sources outside when they become available, and periodically they do. And then the other thing is, is consider citywide assessment for, or utility for drainage. And again, that's something that's hard to build into the general fund budget. It's hard to get people excited about probably, you know, a GEO bond for that, but it might be something of assessment depending on the value of your drainage improvements. And if I remember correctly, there's a several, you know, tens of $20 million of drainage included with that, that you need to fund over time, and that might be an opportunity there as well. Conclusion, you know, we think the city's actually done a good job of managing its budget, and, and under our baseline, you know, baseline assumptions, that the city should be able to maintain services over a long period of time. And while currently financially stable, you are, but you are exposed to some budgetary risks, right? So there's inflation with the safety, public safety contracts that I mentioned, pension and OPEB, even though we think those are fairly stable, we've found that you really never know with PERS, and it really is very much subject to market returns for PERS, and they, they give some good examples of that in their actuaries. And if you have revenue growth below expectations, recessions, reduced economic development, those things also create some, some risk. And then debt funding, as we said, is needed to fund the city's CIP list. Overall, you have the kind of risks you have, or the kind of risks most cities have right now. You've done a good job of managing what you have, and I think a good job of looking, looking to the future. And you have some good decisions to make, where, again, many cities are in positions that had to make some very difficult decisions, or more difficult than the ones you have before you. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Branson. Wow, I got a lot of lights on. Mark, why don't we start with you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation and for actually all the work, and thank you, Rebecca, for spearheading this. You know, it's the nature, I did financial planning for many, many years in the private sector. It's the nature, of course, of financial plans, that the numbers, in a sense, are almost irrelevant. It's the process that's the important thing. And I really appreciate it, having the opportunity to read through, read through your report, and have some comments about that when we get to discussion later on. I'll just restrict myself now to questions. Last, congratulations, congratulations to staff and to prior councils for putting us in this position, because I know it didn't happen without a lot of hard work. And where I made that crack before about I wasn't here when Wheeler Plaza was approved, I wasn't here when all this hard work was done either. So I, in this case, I really appreciate it. So I just wanted to make sure I understand the master, when I think of master plan, I think of master plan as having, master plans as having sort of capital components and then operating cost components for like, things like maintenance and whatnot, maintenance projections. So what, what, if anything, of the projected maintenance costs from our various master plans was not included in the long-range projections? Or did you, in fact, include pretty much everything that was identified?
Well, there's a section in the report itself on the master plans, and so that did include everything that was identified. Now, one of the issues you have is your parks' master plan is actually fairly old, was done in 2008. And so some, you know, and they have been kind of chipping away and doing a lot of those projects, and there's a lot of big ranges on the operating costs. So in the master plan section, we do talk about those, and that summarizes the information we have from your master plans in terms of the total cost. One, my impression of the master plan related to your capital, or your capital facilities, is that it seemed like it probably doesn't cover all of your costs, and I think there are more costs there, that some of the costs seem a little low. And yeah, it's, that's just more my impression of going through it. It felt like it was a little light on some things. But, but the, the master plan section does kind of reflect both the capital and operating expenses that were included in those studies.
This next question is something I was thinking of when I was looking at some of your recommendations, and it's probably not a question you're going to be able to answer, it's really more for Rebecca or Jeff. Do we know how, way back when, the existing sanitary and storm sewer systems were paid for? Was that part of, as developers were building parts of the city, we said, hey, you got to put a sewer system in? So that became part of the cost that, when people were buying their homes, was baked in, or what?
Originally, and those are two different systems, the sewer and the storm drain system. So yeah, but typically, those are requirements of the developers when the developments go in. Certainly, if a new subdivision came in now, it would be required to build its own storm drain and sewer system and connect to us.
So, and what I was getting at by asking the question was, it sounds like then, it wasn't a, an allocation of public funds way back when to build those as the developments were unfolding. It was, there may have been public funds dedicated to various infrastructure, common, pipelines or something, but, but the actual, a lot of the cost was associated with as the city was developed. That was sort of a, an investment that had to be made by each of the developers.
That would be the typical scenario.
The last question I had was, we got a report from, and Jeff, you'll have to remind me which branch of the county. I think if it is CCAG, cleanup costs. You remember that report that we got? And it was several millions of dollars a year when they were, when they were converting capital costs into operating costs. And it was a little bit sketchy the way that was done. But the question I have, which may be more for staff, is, did those costs get factored into this long-range plan, or some component of them? In other words, of meeting the cleanup requirements that the county believes we're going to have to meet?
The ones that were identified in any of the master plans were incorporated.
Yeah. So let me jump in here, because I don't think Rebecca was part of any of those discussions. So this would be new clean water requirements, essentially. Those would not be baked in here. You know, those, this is not anticipating those new regulations. I'm positive that's not included in this study.
That's correct. Yeah, and actually, I don't think it's so much it was new regulations, it was sort of applying existing regulations to known situations.
I'd have to go back and check, but I thought it was anticipating new regs.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe.
There are going to be regs that are being done for clean water locally.
We can, we can discuss that perhaps further offline. My goal is, my desire is just to see if it's something that ought to be included, whether or not we should include it. But those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Matt?
So a couple of questions, just for clarification on the report where I didn't see it. We have had very robust change in the past few years on property sales, residential in St. Carlos. You almost can't touch a house for less than, even with the East Side, which, you know, smaller homes, less cost and so forth. Those are three-quarters of a million, and then most everything else is a million plus to two. We've seen some of those. So that's, that's going to start affecting our property tax. That's figured into what you're doing there, or some kind of?
Yes. So the, I mean, so the property tax, you know, there is an increase in property tax assumed here. It's difficult to, you know, predict future sales. So we, but we did look at, we have both in here. Yeah, historical trends and what's been happening. And so, and we do have, I think it's about, I can't remember the percentage offhand if you look.
It's between three and five.
There you go. About three to five percent. Yeah, increase.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then the, you had mentioned about the rate changes from CalPERS, and I know, right now, I think they're figuring seven to seven and a half, isn't it?
Seven and a half percent is their long-term return assumption.
And I do my own investing for my own retirement, so I look at these reports on where, you know, major investment firms are looking at. know, major investment firms are looking at.
And they're lower than that.
And much lower, five percent for the next 15 years.
Yeah, I just recently heard a CalPERS actuary speak about, and one of the things he talked about was about their returns. And he said there, you'll probably in the next couple of years see them have to lower that discount rate there. And that's been a criticism they've had for a while, their discount rate's too high. So that, you know, so that could have an impact on, that's one of the, you know, one of the, one of the options or one of the things that might happen to you is as your PERS rates might go up. Now, a positive thing that's happened with, you know, as it's happened for the city is that you've had, you have actually a lot of new employees are coming in or in Pepper and you're seeing a fairly good turnover there. That helps keep them stable, but you're definitely subject to the market return for PERS rates in the future.
So then, this is probably for the city manager, if, when that, when, well, I won't even say if, when that day comes, that would somewhat be tied to labor negotiations? Because we would, we would, as a city, we'd be willing to pay some of that increase, but we'd also be asking the employees to increase their contribution perhaps? Is that, is that a labor negotiation thing or what?
Yeah, what you're talking about is certainly a possibility. The city would be on the hook for the employer share, but there, there is, without getting into technicalities, a way to negotiate that with your labor union. So, you know, the labor philosophy of the council has always been to look at total comp. And, you know, so of course, if we're seeing in the future, for whatever reason, large increases in the employer share of our pension obligations, then we will, you know, I think we'll want to talk about that. But conversely, and this kind of goes into what you were just saying, a lot of our employees are, you know, are being covered under the new lowest tier of PERS. So remember, most of these costs, these pension costs that we're dealing with right now, most of that money's left the building. You know, those are retirees. So the question's going to become, how much can you, you know, put on the backs of brand new employees that aren't contributing, don't have that pension, aren't contributing to the problem versus, you know, the reality of your costs? So that'll be a struggle for us and others. I think we're good.
Okay. The, so then the last question I had, you had hit on the public safety approaching 50% of our, of our general fund budget. And you said, you know, we're going to have to keep an eye on those contracts. And the question I have, I know for us, we've been for the last, I don't know, few years, any, any increases in our labor negotiations, we've kept at least the salary part of it. There's been other costs, but the salary portion around 2%. So how does that compare to what we've seen the county doing with sheriff? Because our contract is tied to them. And then what's Redwood City's trend been with police? Do we know? Or, excuse me, fire?
Well, you know, I think it's a little bit hard when it comes to Redwood City because we really just have one year to look at. And so that increase for us was reasonable, fits within the parameters. Now, we do know that their labor contracts have been much higher for Redwood City. So we're going to see some of that filter in, I think, in the coming years. The sheriff's contract, which we've had more years with, we were the beneficiary of, you know, the first year that we entered into the labor, the agreement with the sheriff really was the last year that we had budget trouble. And the county wasn't done dealing with their budget trouble yet. So we actually saw the costs go down in the sheriff the first year and then level out the second and third year. And then in the fourth year, we've seen, you know, a small increase now, a kind of cost of living type increase. So their costs seem to be, you know, when you project that out over the next decade, seem to be, you know, very much within the wheelhouse of what we're looking for.
Do, I'm sorry, sort of follow up on that. Do we, even though we have had an experience with Redwood City of one year, do we know what they're, what they've been doing with their police over the last, say, five years or anything, you know, and the increases they've been negotiating with their, excuse me, again, with fire?
Yeah. Well, we, you know, I don't know that we know sort of historically what they've been doing. We know that their firefighters are at the top of the scale in the county and that large increases were just granted recently.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Cameron?
Thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation and the report. So I wanted to ask a bit about just the general projections. My sense here is I know that, you know, it's your job to provide kind of conservative scenarios, but I think there's a real possibility. I mean, I tend to think personally that, at least in the relative short term, that the baseline estimate is in itself pretty conservative, given the general growth of the Silicon Valley economy. You know, it seems the model is pretty sensitive to the Landmark Hotel bringing in additional million dollars of TOT tax. I know there's been additional interest from other hotel developers that could bring in additional tax. There's been, we have interests from mortgage supply hardware and other building material suppliers are moving into town. And then just the continued growth of the, of, you know, the cost of real estate. Can you comment on that? I mean, is that, we don't see, we don't see like a, hey, this is a better than normal projection. I guess the other thing I would throw in there too is that there's a recent, the city has rented out a couple of billboards that it owns that's going to bring in additional revenue. I don't know if that's factored in, but given what you're seeing kind of in the general Bay Area economy, is there, is there a scenario here where you think that the projections could come in quite a bit higher than baseline?
Yeah, I think there, I think definitely there is, right? These are fairly, I think they're fairly, they are fairly conservative, you know, fairly conservative revenue projections. And the reason, you know, and the reason being for that is, again, not to overestimate because you never know what is going to happen and to look at, well, how are you set if we have reasonable kind of conservative revenue, reasonable conservative expense projections, you know, do we see any problems coming? So that's one of the purposes of this. You know, I think as Councilmember Olbert says, that, you know, the process is almost more, is important or more important than the numbers of looking at that. But I think you definitely, there's definitely a possibility that you can see a better than, a better return and average on your revenues. You know, we didn't actually include it here because you're already doing so well. We're looking more at sensitivity to expense increases. But over 20, especially over a 20-year period, I guarantee you this is very wrong, right? But over the next few years, I think it's, it's pretty good and gives you some landmarks and helps you see in the future. But yes.
And then on the downside, even, it's hard to construct a catastrophic scenario here. And I wondered whether you would agree with that. And I wondered what you think about the city's kind of reserve policy? Are we holding too much in reserve? Should we be holding less in reserve, given that, you know, the strong financial position of the city and even with, you know, your various scenarios, it's hard to find a situation which we'd run in a deficit in the near term?
Yeah, reserves are always interesting. I say I have my, a little bit of a, I'm informed by what happened during the Great Recession and how quickly things can potentially turn. I do think you have, you know, I think you have to be careful in terms of, one of the, reserves are one-time monies. And so if you spend them, they're gone. And so once you have them, I think there's definitely, you know, typically they're nice to hold on to for some kind of emergency, something happens to give you time to react. I don't, my impression from what I see that your city has compared to other cities, actually I think you're right in the ballpark of what most cities try to maintain in terms of reserves.
And then the graph in which you showed sort of between, you know, 45 and 55 million available to spend potentially on capital, is, over what period of time is that?
That's over the 20-year period of time.
Okay.
So yeah, so that's, and it's all of the, all the different sources that you, that you currently put in for capital as well as the excess revenue and the.
And so your recommendation is that that, essentially that excess surplus be put into capital to pay down essentially?
To pay out. I mean, it all becomes a matter of priorities.
Right.
But one of the things that I, that I see that the council has is a strong priority to invest in the community in a number of different ways. And so that was the recommendation, given what I see as the priority of the council.
Okay. And then one last thing that I wanted to talk about is the unfunded capital number, which last year when we looked at, I think was in the 200s and now it's in the 350s. I have a little bit of a gripe about just the title and how you look at it because, I mean, certain things under here like utility, undergrounding and all sorts of things are very much in the nice to have category. And I think that because of the national debate about unfunded liability in Medicare, unfunded liability in, in social security, I hear people when they have heard the city has an unfunded liability of 200, they think, oh, the city is bankrupt. The city is in terrible financial situation. And it plays into a larger narrative about sort of waste and abuse and, you know, reckless spending, when in fact, most of the things that you have listed here are, you know, nice to have projects that are by no means a liability on our balance sheet. They're conceptual projects that we might one day build. And so I wonder, you know, as I'm just looking at, you know, how might we structure this in a way that is a little bit more understandable to the public? And I think, you know, back to Mark's earlier question about, are we looking at things where it's essentially maintenance and replacement on existing facilities that we have versus, you know, building, you know, brand new facilities that we may, may or may not build in the future? And I wondered if you could sort of comment on that.
Yeah, so as I looked at, you know, and you have, and some of that's built in, you have some maintenance on your existing facilities kind of built in your budget already. So I think your unfunded CIP list are primarily things that the city would like to do as I read them, to invest in the city and to keep it, just like everything, we need to keep investing, improving. Some of it's improvements, some of it's, you know, added facilities, aquatic center, you know, replacing things you have that maybe have out, you know, have outlived their lives, like a larger community center or something like that. But right, it's not reflective of unfunded liabilities of things that you haven't funded as much as there's things that you would like to fund to reinvest in the community.
And I know it's the traditional title for it, but I just wish it was different because it has led to confusion when we've talked about people, would talk to people about it.
Can I tag along on that and just say I think that's a really good point and maybe we should task staff with coming up with a better terminology and categorization of the, of the spending, of the dollars?
Thanks. And then lastly, I just want to ask, and I'm sort of the new guy up here, is this something that we do annually? Or have we never done this before or is it?
We do, we do five-year forecasts.
I see.
But this is the first long-term 20-year forecast that we've done.
Okay. I, this is just a personal preference. I love when we look at individual forecasts, also looking at what was the last forecast and seeing if we learn, you know, how, just the accuracy of it and just take a moment to reflect on it because it all, you know, there's so much unknown and trying to understand where we got it right and where we got it wrong, I think is helpful for all of our collective learning. So, and that's all I got.
All right. Thank you, Cameron. I just have a couple and I apologize if Cameron may have asked these things while I was, while I stepped out. Silly question. Tell me again what Pepper stands for.
Oh, Public Employees Pension Reform Act. Thank you. I had it written down somewhere because I knew somebody was going to ask that.
All right. Next one, the city's exposure on, you mentioned inflation and pension and unfunded liability, low revenue growth. Are these things that are fairly common to most cities?
Yeah, I think these are, these are the common risk factors all cities have, right? So, I mean, so yeah, so what happens with, what happens with pension? How do your revenues inflate? I mean, and there's a lot of things you don't control. What you do control, and it sounds, you know, like you've talked about, I think having a good sense of that are your labor contracts or your, you know, things you spend money on is primarily the control you have. And what development you improve, you know, you approve, but whether it gets built, how it gets built is all factors generally outside of your control. Although you've built a great community, so people want to build here and that helps.
Okay. And the only other question I had is, are unfunded liabilities better, worse, similar to other cities that you've looked at?
Your unfunded liabilities are actually fairly low, I think, compared to other cities. And part of that's because you've, you've built in over the last number of years, a lot of different, you know, pension tiers in terms of PERS, as well as you've made changes to your retiree health, which has helped save those as well. So overall, you're fairly low, I think, you know, on the lower end of the unfunded liabilities.
All right. And then the last one was, you mentioned that debt financing for the capital improvement list. Now, disregarding for a moment some of the things that Cameron had suggested may be removed, is it, is it your thought that a lot of these, some of the things like, you know, utilities and, or, I don't know, drainage and other big items that we have, are those things typically funded by general obligation bonds or other revenue measures in other cities? And do you feel, do you think those are things that we should look at?
Well, I, you know, I think all these gets down to sense of priorities and there's, you know, what you want to fund out of what you control, which is your general fund budget versus what you want to take to the voters. And those are always, you know, difficult questions and propositions to make. I'd say things like, you know, undergrounding, I mean, a lot of times you'll see that be paid somehow through the utilities, right? And that can factor into the bill if you, if you do that. Sometimes it can be done as part of development. I mean, I think you, what you have, I think what every city has to do now is, is be as creative as possible. I haven't seen general geo bonds, votes for undergrounding utilities or even drainage. A lot of cities have had drainage utilities from pre Prop 218, so they have kind of funding for that. A lot, probably most didn't. And so that, that actually becomes a bigger question. That's what, when they suggest there's some kind of assessment district where people, there's a property benefit to drainage, that you can create a special benefit, that might be an opportunity there. That's a different kind of a vote, different kind of a process. But I think you have to be creative, right? Depending what you want to fund, some things just won't be able to fund. But I think you look at multiple sources and, and be as creative as possible in trying to get things funded and look at what the community desire is as well.
Okay. Thank you. Good report. Any other questions from council? All right. There is one member of the public here. Did you wish to speak on this? Okay. He doesn't want to speak. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2015 dash.
Number eight.
Number eight. A resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos adopting a long-term financial plan.
A second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Just a couple of things that I wanted to mention. I think it's a very good point that the, the process here has identified labor contract outsourcing as a risk exposure for us. We often think about the fact that we've been very creative in outsourcing and I, I think it's a, I have no problem with it. I think it's a good thing to do in many cases. But we are pioneers and one of the things that happens when you do outsourcing is you, as was pointed out, no longer have complete control over your destiny. It's either market forces like with Kachina or it's quasi-public forces with Redwood City and the county. So I would encourage staff to keep us informed as promptly as you can of any kind of developments in those areas, any kind of intelligence you get about the trend of what Redwood City or the county might be doing, because the more time we have to react, the better off we all will be. And the only other comments I was going to make is, I actually think that suitably distilled and frankly, I think clarified along the lines of what Cameron was suggesting about terminology of not making it look like we have a huge unfunded liability when we really don't. I think this is something that not only should we present to the community, but I think it also ought to make the rounds and be presented to staff as well. I think it's important for the employees of our organization to understand what the longer range financial context is of the company they work in. So those are suggestions that I have.
All right. Anybody else? I don't see any lights on. So we have a motion and a second. Bristol?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grootkot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yep.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. All right. We are at item 9D, consideration of adopting a resolution specifying the number of council members required to support agendizing an item for consideration or discussion at a future council meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. At your last council meeting, staff was asked to prepare this item on tonight's agenda for the council to discuss. We have a, we have two resolutions attached to this item. One that would call for a continuation of the practice for the last year, which is two council members to put an item on a future agenda. And we have a resolution going back to the past practice before last year of three council members. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Any questions from anybody? All right. Guess we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution 2015 dash. I move to adopt Resolution 2015 dash?
Nine.
Nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos specifying three council members required to support agendizing an item for consideration discussion in a future council meeting.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Obert?
Yes. Since I was the one who triggered having us actually review this, I just want to make a couple of points here before we vote. I did mention last time about one of the things I thought was an advantage of a two-person rule rather than a three was there's always the possibility that we might change each other's minds. Obviously, even a three-person rule doesn't require that those same three people be voting in favor of an action, but it certainly sets the bar to the point where I think that's more likely than not. There are a couple of other points I just want to bring to people's attention. You know, there is, one of the things I learned when I was campaigning, and I've since heard in subsequent campaign from some of my colleagues, there is a perception in the community that, of two things. One is that we don't really set our own agenda. It's set by staff, and that we are essentially rubber stamps. And the other is that there's a perception that the council tends to be relatively unresponsive to the community. Now, I actually will say that in my own personal belief, a lot of that is more perception than reality. But I would also like to caution my colleagues that setting the bar higher on what we actually put before us in a timely fashion, as opposed to going through the usually six months and perhaps 12-month delay of going through the strategic planning process, is really going to do nothing except exacerbate those two perceptions, which is a great concern to me. So those are the only two additional comments I would wish to make in addition to what I had said last time.
All right. Thank you. Matt?
Well, I have some things I wanted to say, but if, you know, I think before I say them, I would really like to know, what's the impetus for changing it? Why raise the bar? I can think of reasons why to leave it as it is, but why raise it?
So I'd be happy to, since I made the motion, I'll be happy to make the argument in favor of it. And the argument is that when we put something on the agenda, it's not just taking our time. In fact, our time is a small representation of the time that it takes. Items that we put on the agenda can take many hours, many days, in some case, weeks of staff time. And I personally consider staff to be a very precious and finite and constrained resource. I think we are in a very unique moment and time in the City of San Carlos, which, as we just heard, the city's in excellent financial shape. The economy is growing. There's a lot of people moving here. And we also are pretty well-aligned in terms of what the big strategic priorities are. But what we, you know, what we have is a very small staff to be able to accomplish those priorities. And so my concern is about essentially taking a lot of excess time from staff on things that don't represent the broad swath of support from the council. And in so doing, lose the opportunity to achieve a lot of those big strategic priorities that we have, that we've said we want to tackle.
And I would, through the chair, I concur with my colleague. I think we do have the six-month, every six months, we have our strategic planning, and I think those are the items that we need to concentrate on. And periodically, I know all of us have ideas that come into our heads, and I think it'd be great if folks could look at it and study it. But as Mr. Johnson said, I, if we had unlimited resources and unlimited staff, I think it'd be terrific. But the way government moves, whether you, whenever you go to anything in government, it's going to take some time. And if, I'd like to have the staff spend the time on the bigger items, as we're talking about the strategic plans, as opposed to possibly some items that come up on a, an item was a one-timer, so to speak, as I'd call it. And all of a sudden, some of the strategic things that we wanted to get done in a certain amount of time get delayed even longer. So that's sort of why. And seemingly, it worked pretty darn well. It seemed, at least the first eight years I was on the council, that it seemed to work out fairly well. So I think I'd like to go back to that area.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Matt?
So I think, I think at a broader level, this brings up the question on, how do you get things on the agenda? How does the community get things on the agenda if they have something that they're concerned about? And it's already a very high bar for either an organized group or otherwise of citizens to get something for the council to pay attention to it and to get it on the agenda. I think raising this to three, staying with that scenario where you've got the public or group, you know, a group of the public wants to get something considered, for them to discuss that item, you're saying they have to, when you raise the bar to three, it's imperative almost that they talk to every one of us in order to try and grab three who are willing to say at a council meeting, you know, outside of the retreat process, this is a concern of the community, we need to address this, we need to get it on the agenda. And in so doing, by driving it that direction, you're adding to the risk of violating the Brown Act, as I see it. Because if Ben Fuller, for instance, gets a hold of me and says, you know, I'm really concerned about XYZ issue as president of, you know, the East Side Association, and I say, you know, I agree with you, Ben. I think we should look at that. And then he calls up the mayor, and he meets with the mayor, and the mayor tells him the same thing, boom, he stops. Because he knows now, he can say, well, you know, the mayor's agreed, Matt's agreed. He can even say to one of us, you know, get in touch with each other. And then it goes on the agenda. If we show up at a meeting, we say, you know, we met with Ben, and he's concerned about this. But if it's three, he's got to keep going. And then you run into the problem of, you know, I call Bob and I say, da-da-da, and he forgets, you see what I'm saying? It adds to that risk. That's number one. Number two, I see this as being very parallel to simply what we do up here when we have an item like we've had all night. You know, the Roberts Rules says if you're going to discuss something, you have to first have a motion and a second. What the person making the second, or either one really, all they're saying is, when you make a motion and you second it, each of those people, they're not saying they're going to vote for that item. They're saying, all right, this is worthy of discussion. Let's look at it. And that's what you're doing when you're trying to get something on the agenda, too. You're just saying, I'm not necessarily going to vote for this, but it's worthy of discussion. I don't see how the two have, should have a different bar. The third item I wanted to raise tonight is relative to, which becomes mute if we stick with this idea of it takes three, it kind of makes it mute. But we just recently went through a thing where we voted on an item that, this is the license plate reader issue. We voted on it. It was two in favor, three against. And then it came back to us with only, really, I think, one, well, I took two people, because the mayor brought it up, you weren't the mayor at the time, but you brought it up, and the mayor at the time, Mark, said, yeah, I think it's worthy of bringing back, taking another look at it. So it just took two people on something that we'd already voted on and made a decision on. And it seems to me, in circumstances like that, it should take three. Because if it's too easy to go change your vote, the public never knows what to expect from you. They can't, they can't put a trust in what you've done in saying, okay, they voted on it, it's going to stay that way, that's the way that it is, that's now the law, we're moving forward. There's always this concern, if it's too easy to make those changes, to make those changes. So I think in those cases, it should be three. But when it's just a, you know, an issue that, you know, one of us has, I think it should just stay two.
If I may just briefly respond, just to the first two points, which is, I mean, first, I would say, it's not illegal for members of the public to talk to more than two council members.
No, I know.
And in fact, you know, routinely, you know, pretty much every, most email that are sent are sent to all of us. So I don't want to leave any perception in the public's mind that they're violating any laws by trying to reach out to more than two council members. And then on the second one, I just, you know, one is a question of the procedure that we're up here, and another is about dedicating staff resources. And I appreciate your perspective, and I see them as separate items.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just a couple of things. One is, I think Matt makes a number of good points. One thing I do want to clarify, Matt, my recollection is, I think, with the license plate reader, what happened is that the current mayor indicated that to staff that he was willing to potentially change his vote, which my understanding is Roberts Rules, that the only thing that can bring it back is somebody who was in the majority saying, I'm willing to change my vote, whether it was yes or no. So I get to use one of my favorite words here, and I think I'm actually using it correctly. I would argue that the concern over use of staff resources is essentially a shibboleth. And here's why. Because when we adopt, shortly after we adopted the two-person rule, we made it really clear that we expected Jeff to weigh in if we came up with a suggestion that we wanted staff to work on that was going to take a lot of resources and time and effort to work on. And there were a couple of things last year that I recall got sidetracked as a result of that. Because basically, it was, hey, this looks like an interesting idea. Staff said, well, the resource requirement is really high. And we said, well, okay, it's not that good of an idea. So I really don't see that as a particular issue. And if people think it's an issue, maybe what we need to do is give direction to Jeff to say, please be more assertive when this is going to represent a drain on resources. The only other comment I'll make is, Bob, I respect the fact that you think the prior system of three worked well. I will tell you that pretty much from the day I joined the council, I thought it didn't work well at all for me. And that's probably one of the reasons why I was an advocate of changing it. I viewed it as, and still view it as, providing a tremendous bias in terms of status quo ante, maintaining the status quo ante, whatever that happens to be. And I know that when I say it didn't work well for me, it was as a new council member, you know, running on a platform that did involve some changes of direction in some areas, I was faced with the prospect of, well, maybe a year from now, we might actually be able to do something about this. And I found that very frustrating. So, you know, just another man's opinion. I don't think it worked well at all.
All right. Well, I'll give you my feeling on it, since I'm the one that brought it up. You know, we do need to focus on the big things. And personally, I didn't see any great benefit to come out of having two votes to bring, put an item on the agenda. And I didn't see any great injury, since I was on the council for two years before we changed it, from requiring three votes. I'm having a hard time thinking of, and I'm sure Mark will probably remind me, but trying to think of really important issues that were brought up with two votes that we ended up making some, you know, big decisions on. So that's, and I just felt that, given that, and I agree with what Cameron said, that there is a lot of staff time involved. And we also end up with longer meetings. Not that we shouldn't have longer meetings in some cases, but like I said, I didn't see any great benefit of having two votes. I didn't see any great injury in having three. So that's my two cents on it. There's no more discussion. I guess we're probably ready for a vote.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
No.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to 9E, consideration of appointments to the City Council Subcommittee and Ad-Hoc Committees for 2015. I guess everybody's gotten a copy, where's mine, of committee assignments and, is there any?
Here, let me give it, let me give you my, let me give you my copy. Let me just give you my copy that I have.
All right. Thank you. I'm sure I have it.
Yeah, it's in your computer.
I know.
Mr. Mayor?
I was lazy.
Would you like a motion?
I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I move to appoint City Council members to select boards, committees, and authorities as attached.
A second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a brief comment, if I may?
Yes.
Assuming this passes, as I hope it will, I just want my colleagues to know that I expect that I will probably, I will be resigning my position on CMEC, the Congestion Management Environmental Quality Relief Subcommittee of CCAG, because I am also serving as our representative on CCAG itself. And to me, it just seems kind of redundant.
Okay.
I have a question regarding, that's similar to what Mark's talking about. I'm on BPAC, and the way that came about actually was not, we didn't go through proper channels, actually. Tom Davids was on BPAC, and that's a Subcommittee of CCAG as well. And he wanted to get off, we were on the council together at the time, and he asked me if I wanted to take his place, which I did. And I started going to meetings, and then their staff said, wait a minute, how did this happen? And they kind of, you know, brought me in and okayed it, sort of after the fact that I'd been to a couple of meetings. It's been a long time, and I'm not necessarily all that interested in staying with it. But it is a representation point for the city on that Subcommittee. It's not a have-to-be that, you know, that we have anybody. But if I did resign from it, it would leave San Carlos without any representation that I, I don't know if we have, there are also citizen members.
If I could chime in, not every city has a representative on BPAC or CMEC.
Right.
So it's who wants to, you know, so if you go off, then somebody, some other elected official from some other city would go on. And then there's public people that are, CCAG appoints every couple of years, depending on terms. Just to.
And I don't know if we have anybody from the public on BPAC right now?
We've always tried to balance off. I mean, we've looked at it, try to not have everybody from one city be on one thing or another. But if you need to, again, both situations, you need to resign, other people will step up. Either we could, or somebody else. But it's not the, I'm not required to be on it.
We don't necessarily need to appoint or replace.
No.
In fact, we can't appoint. We can apply, but we can't appoint.
Yeah, yeah. You have to apply.
Okay.
So I guess I bring that up because I want to know, how does the council feel about that if I resign from it? Is it?
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
You're okay?
Sure, sure call.
All right. Anything else? Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. I guess we are now going to adjourn to closed session.
Actually, we still have item 7C.
Oh, 7C, yes. Thank you very much.
And you need to extend the meeting because the closed session is part of the regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we extend the meeting until 11:00 PM.
A second.
All right. Is that a roll call or just all those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call.
All in favor.
All in favor is fine.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. All right. I'd rather go.
Oh, did you say opposed?
Yeah, I'm opposed. Yeah.
Okay.
Three, four, two against.
We have three to two.
Extension carries.
Okay. Now, I think we, ready to go to closed session?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
7C.
Sorry, I'm almost as old as you are, so that's my excuse.
Strategic plans, there is a staff report attached. There is no presentation prepared this evening. As I said earlier, you know, we're happy to put this on for new business and do a presentation for the council in the future. However, this was an item that after we had done that, the council said, put it on the consent calendar. So it's up to the council how we do that going forward. But for tonight, there is no presentation prepared.
Well, it'll take three of us to put it on the agenda. The, Mr. Mayor, through the chair, I realize we don't have a motion on the floor yet, but I was wondering whether my colleagues might accept as trying to factor in Matt's point, which I thought was well-taken about making sure the public is aware of the changes. I would actually be okay if I would actually be okay if, when we make the major revisions after the strategic planning session, that we make sure that those are actually on the agenda in this presentation, which I think has been our practice.
We do, yeah. We present it, when we have a new strategic plan, we present the whole thing to the public.
Right. And again, I have no objection to somebody, any one of us individually saying, wait a minute, we made some change in the interim that's important enough, I want to discuss it, but I think it's a general practice, I'm okay with following that.
Mr. Mayor? I move that we approve the updates to the city's strategic plan and six-month objective matrix.
Second.
All right. Matt, your light is on.
I just wanted to echo a little bit what Mark was saying, and really, my point is not that every month to get an update on every single item on the grid, but just, A, if we make a change, and B, especially if we have items that are still being worked on, and especially if those items are running behind, that we give a presentation on it. If it's just, you know, routine and everything is done, I think that's, you know, that's sufficient. Although I will say this, too, I think, because, you know, the public, we've all been to the retreats, and the public generally doesn't attend unless it's, you know, Bonnie McClure or Tom Davids or, you know, somebody who follows us pretty closely. And so I think when we get towards the end of the six-month period, to do a presentation that says, here was our strategic plan for these last six months, and these are the things we've, you know, completed, that to me also would make sense, because, you know, to show the public, these are the things we've been working on over the six months and completed.
All right. Okay. I think we're ready for a vote?
Yeah. Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Now we go to closed session.